I can take it. Here's your tape.
He'll be here. Jeff, Jeff will be here.
It's one of the, oh, I see, we got, uh...
Yeah. Bill? Bill? Bill?
John, you're right, square on the timer.
Well, it's behind it a little bit.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. Go call.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DeCorsy?
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Okay, uh, excuse. So...
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
(laughing).
Oh, John. Okay, we'll go into, uh, row number two, announcements, reports, and presentations. Does the council have any? Hearing none? Okay, 2A, racial equity and implicit bias presentation, thirty minutes. Just to let council know, we'll probably, we'll probably run past thirty minutes tonight, because this is an important, uh, study session. My understanding is that this, uh, resolution will come before the council next Monday for vote.
No.
No?
Council wanted it brought back July fifteenth for a vote.
What did you make that?
Is it July fifteenth?
That was my switch. It was tabled to July, or it was postponed to July fifteenth.
So we have more opportunity to discuss it in between then. Good. Okay, please.
Thank you, uh, City Council, Dana Himmam, Director of Administration, and, um, we invited, um, two, I guess, local experts in the area of, um, equity and social justice, uh, in order to kind of continue this conversation and, and further the conversation down the road. I have with me Denise Daniels and, um, Deanna Kilga from Auburn High School, who have pretty much led the effort in the Auburn School District around equity. And, uh, as the City Council has asked, you know, what is the return on investment? And, and, you know, what is an organization such as ours going to get from embarking on really the systemic change that we're looking for, um, as servants to our residents? So I just asked them to come and talk about the work and talk about what the Auburn School District has kind of gotten from, from the effort and just draw on their expertise and allow some subject matter experts that are just up the road from us, um, to maybe field some of your questions that we might be struggling to answer, because we're wanting to do this but, um, haven't been able to, I think, really reflect, um, in our, um, answers back to you what the city of Auburn could gain from this. So, ladies.
Yeah, thank you so much. So thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Baggett. Uh, my name is Denise Daniels, and I am currently the Director of Equity Outreach and Family Engagement for the Auburn School District. And I apologize, I know, um, Dr. Spachati was not able to attend, but I did invite, um, Deanna Kilga, who, introduce yourself.
Yeah, Deanna Kilga, Assistant Principal at Auburn High School. I'm just finishing up my fifth year at Auburn High.
So, um, yes, we're very excited to share with you, um, some of the work we've been doing at Auburn, um, in the school district. So we've recognized, um, over the last, I've been there, I'm in my sixth year, and we recognize that, um, in serving our students and our families, that, you know, there were some gaps and some, some challenges to reaching all of our families. And that really was evident in several areas. It was evident in achievement, it was evident in discipline, it was evident in who was represented, um, in our school district, in our leadership. And so, um, the, the Auburn School District really decided to take a hard look at some data and use that data to then guide our direction as far as we were, um, developing a new strategic plan. And actually, this work began when Kip Herring was still there. So he recognized that, you know, our demographics are changing, our community is changing, and we weren't completely doing the best we could to make sure that we were providing all of our students access to opportunities and all of our families. And so, as we began to look at how we could do that better, we began to focus on equitable outcomes, because what we did realize is that we were having inequitable outcomes for some of our students. Many of our students were not performing as well, many of our students were being more harshly disciplined, many of our students didn't have access to highly capable programs, to AP pro, AP classes, and many of those students, um, were students of color. And as we began to dig deeper into the data, we realized that, um, there was a lack of opportunity and a lack of outreach to be able to adequately reach families and students and share information with them, um, to make a true effort to be more inclusive. Um, we, we did several surveys and, you know, there was, um, gosh, the data showed that our families didn't even feel welcome coming into our school buildings at times, in particular families who were not English, like, English language speakers, they didn't feel welcome coming into our buildings, um, they weren't served well, they were not greeted well. And a lot of that had to do with a lack of understanding of how to connect better with more, with other communities and other ethnicities. And so Auburn really took that to heart, and we've been very diligent in our work over the last several years to really improve those outcomes. Um, that's happened over the course of a lot of work. So we've done, we developed a team, what we called our core team, which is connecting on racial equity, and that was our core, our team, it was, uh, the assistant superintendents, there were community members, there was representation from each of the school levels, teachers, principals, there were, there were parents. And we decided to come together and see how we could better serve all of our students. Now, this was actually done as a regional work, so there were, there were several districts in the region that were doing this work at the same time, so that made it, um, better in, in that we're all approaching this work together, because we all, most districts, most places tend to have the same, the same challenges. So we began that work, and the reason we began to talk about racial equity is because when we began to disaggregate our data, our achievement data, for example, what we found was, because, you know, people would say, well, it's about poverty, and yes, poverty is, is a piece of it, for sure, but we began to disaggregate our data, and what we found was, is that students of color who did not qualify for free and reduced lunch, which is kind of our determining factor of students in poverty, right? So we say, if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, you're considered to be in poverty. Our students who were not in poverty, our students of color who were not in poverty, who did not qualify for free and reduced lunch, were still being outperformed in certain areas by our white students who did qualify for free and reduced lunch. So in essence, our, what we would consider our, our kids in poverty, that were not students of color, were outperforming students who, of color, who were not in poverty. So then we began to say, okay, maybe there's something else here, and we began to look at race, and we began to look at, what are the experiences of our students in our school buildings? In particular, our students and families of color. What are our teachers, what are they bringing to the table? Because we know, as Auburn is right now, our school district, our students, we're sixty-one percent students of color in our school district, we're about eighty-three percent teacher, um, about, so seventeen percent teachers of color. So we know that our demographics of our, our staff do not match the demographic of our students, and, and that's okay. But then we had to figure out, how can we then support our staff to make those connections with those students, who they might not necessarily feel as though they are comfortable with, you know, students might not speak the language, there might be some other barriers. So we were really intentional about providing supports for our staff and our students and our families to help bridge those gaps and make those connections. And a lot of that happened, it's happened over the last several years, where we've been very intentional about doing training around racial equity and, and, you know, trying to figure out, you know, who are we and what do we bring to the table? And as a district and as a staff member, are we presenting barriers that might be stopping the success of our students and our families? So we had to take a look at ourselves, right? Because it's very easy, as people often do, you know, say, well, it's the families and it's the students, and yes, our students and families are accountable for some of their success, but so are we as a school district. And we really had to take a hard look in the mirror instead of looking out the window. And when we began to do that, we began to understand that there were some systems and some things in place that probably could be changed a little bit to help accommodate and help welcome and help to give more opportunities to our students. So over the course of the, the next few years, um, we really embedded equity around, um, our strategic plan, and we developed an equity policy. And basically, what that policy says is, a student's racial, our student's ethnicity will cease to be a determining factor in their success, because you can look typically, you can look at data and it shows, when you look at students who are underperforming, typically you see students of color. So our goal is to really eliminate that predictor. So a student's ethnicity will not be a predictor of their, the success. And so that's really what we have taken on, and we've really done a lot, um, over the last several years to really help change those, those demographics. So you want to share some of the things that...
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I wanted to add, because, um, one of the first things that, in, in my job as an assistant principal, that I worked with was our AP programs and trying to encourage and invite and support students of color, um, if they'd been recommended by teachers, like, you have capacity for this, you are smart, you can do this. And, um, I would say that at first, the effort was just numbers, we want to get our numbers up, numbers up, but there was a missing piece in terms of, were they prepared for it? Did they have the support? And, and oftentimes, kids would come out of those classes saying, I don't like being the only brown kid in there, or they look at me like I'm supposed to answer for all the brown and black people. Um, that, I think, is getting better, but the work that the district has been tasked with and has jumped in with both feet, has really been about helping staff members understand. So we have our personal journey, I'm a white woman, I'm almost fifty years old, and I've had lots of great opportunities in my life. I'll never understand what it means to be a Latino woman, or a, a young black man, I'll never know what it means to be a parent of a young black person. So I've engaged in a lot of personal work, professional development, lots of books, lots of just educating myself, and the district entered into some, um, contracts and some, some, I don't know how to call deep equity, but they, they provided additional training for, um, for staff members to, to learn a little bit about systemic racism and, um, the background of it and what the need is. And, and I, I believe a hundred percent that everybody who works in our school district is there because they love kids and they want to see kids succeed. And nobody is coming to this work saying, well, I don't want this, or whatever, it's, but the more I learn about the systemic nature and the history behind gaps, um, the more I realize that there's, there's a lot to be made up. We don't, we have four hundred years to try to, to make up. So, um, I appreciate the training as an opportunity to have conversations about race. And, um, in particular, Auburn High School has done, um, an additional program specifically for youth called Youth Equity Stewardship. And, um, every year, for the last three years, we've had between eighty and a hundred students that have participated in five days of, um, full day trainings on what it means to be a steward of equity. And it, and it's, we talk a lot about racial equity, but we also talk about, um, gender identity, um, sexual orientation, disability, poverty, religion, we talk about all of the, the isms. Um, and I have some amazing kids who are ready to talk about it, who have been trained, who, who want to engage, and even the most willing participant, um, who's the most passionate about it, can have all this training, but when you get into a moment of, hey, you said the N-word, like, you don't get to say that, why did you say that? Take that down from social media. It's such an intense conversation that even with the best skills and the best training possible, it doesn't always go right. And so we are learning that we can't just offer five days of training and call it good. We can't just check that box. So this year, we're doing a district-wide high school cohort for Youth Equity Stewardship. We are also, um, doing some really intentional things around keeping the Youth Equity Stewardship program going on a regular weekly basis. Like, this is not just a, once every two months, we're going to get together and you get to skip all your classes and learn about equity. We're putting into place that the weekly, here, we're going to meet, we're going to, what are the things that we want to do? How do we help people enter into those conversations? What do we do when something happens and you, you want to ask, because that's uncomfortable? It's really scary. As an adult, it's a scary conversation to have. And I think our kids are way more ready for it, um, but they need support. Um, and our, our staff is slowly coming around to seeing, like, yes, we're ready to do the work.
We have a question here.
Sure. I have to say that I've had the opportunity to work with both of these ladies at the Auburn High School on the race equity, uh, piece, and also, um, when it, when I first was introduced with this group was when Kip Herring was in it and Robin Larson started it. And, uh, we got the teachers, some teachers, some parents, and one council member that was part of this, and, um, it was really tense, because it was, like you said, it's a topic that people don't want to talk about. And we had people of several ethnicity groups in this, and, uh, they were afraid to say things, and we couldn't move forward or anything, and we went a whole year planning and, and trying to come up with the statement of what the mission statement was going to be and everything, and it was difficult. Then the next year, um, we, I met Denise, and Denise came in, and as she said, um, she got the group of different, well, parents, uh, teachers, students, um, staff, uh, in this group, and we started working again with the mission statement. And, uh, again, it was kind of a tough issue to talk about. We even had a training, she had us all meet, and, uh, we had to come up with words of our experience of name-calling's. And it was really hard for white people to say, yeah, I have heard that, I have used those terms, even the Latino teachers and staff people that were there, they, it was difficult for them to say what they have gone. So they have done a lot of good, uh, since they've started this, and that's why I'm so passionate about this, because I'm glad to see that the students are getting this training. But if us adults are having problems facing the bias and the, the, you know, stim, stigma that's, that's out there, um, we need it in this city as well. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing, because I know we're, we're still working on, on some other issues, and I've really enjoyed working with, uh, the Auburn's, uh, School District staff. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that, what you said, the adult part is huge, because the kids are, the kids are, are, you know, they're a lot more comfortable. But as the gatekeepers, as the decision-makers, as the supporters, it's really important for the adults to be on, to understand their role in it as well. And a lot of times, you know, it really is, you don't know what you don't know, right? So if you don't know what's happening and you don't know how you could possibly change or what you bring to the table, it's really hard to do it. And so really, that's really the goal, is just to, just to, um, consider different perspectives, right? To kind of share experiences, to share information, and to use that to consider what we call enhancing our equity lens, right? Potentially looking from the perspective of someone else and considering that, you know, my reality is not your reality, and it may be very different, and there might be something that you can do to help me change my reality and something I can do to help you change yours. And so that's really what it's about, in particular, because like I said, we are an increasingly diverse community. And in order to build community, we're going to have to be able to connect with each other, we're going to have to be able to support each other, we're going to have to be able to provide opportunities. And so the only way we're going to do that is if we begin to understand each other and begin to work together to build those relationships.
And I would add that, um, it's important to create trusting environments where people can make mistakes. I have been passionate about equity work since I was, uh, in seventh grade, um, having grown up in the time of We Are the World and Ethiopia and starving kids, I grew up with that. So I'm a little bit of a recovering white savior in my own regard, but I have a great example of, I don't know what I don't know. I've been the, the point person at Auburn High School for staff development around culturally responsive teaching practices, equity, all of these things. And we had our building leadership retreat last, um, August in, um, at Bogies, and people were trying to make decisions, and I wanted to help them with a decision, and I said, just go inimini minimo. So you cringed, you cringed, I had no idea, and my colleague, my, who's a history teacher, pulls me aside, he's like, did you not know, like, kitchen? And I went, I had no clue, none whatsoever. And so even somebody whose intent is a hundred and fifty percent, like, we're going to do this and it's going to be hard, but it's okay when we make mistakes, there have been more than one times where I have said, oh my gosh, did I just bring too much of my white self here, or, help me, help me work through that. And that's what I think we have to work towards, is creating a space where we're going to say some things that are potentially going to be, um, ouchy, um, but we're going to support each other and know that our, our best intentions, that's what's on the table. We, we want to work together, we want our kids to be successful, and this community is beautifully diverse and growing and has such, um, rich offerings. We just had our multicultural fair about three weeks ago, and to see our kids dance and bring food and their language and just have the pride about where they come from, it's an amazing resource that I, that I hope that this, uh, community can jump on and, and jump into.
Your first, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I appreciate very much both of you being here tonight and helping us, uh, talk about these issues and to be thinking about it. And I really appreciate what you said about educators being people that love children, and, you know, I don't think there's a better example of the need for us to be looking and thinking about these issues than the actual outcomes from education, including disparate discipline, um, disparate academic outcomes. And it, yeah, I have to believe, knowing educators to the extent that I know them and am familiar with them, is, it's not intentional, right? And I, I think that's an important thing, because we tend to, uh, maybe internalize, uh, these discussions about these issues, at least in the white community, maybe, uh, that somehow we are being implicated by even the idea that we should be doing this. But you said something really important, I think, and that is, that we don't know what we don't know. And, and, uh, this isn't a matter of taking a class or going through a course, or, this is about how we live our lives and how we approach, uh, this very important issue for our community, for our state, for our nation, that we continue to work on these issues. And, uh, you know, I have to say that I have made those same mistakes myself, and, and I try to live intentionally in a way that, uh, but, you know, we learn. And so I, I just would encourage all of us to be thinking about how we make this a better community for all of our citizens. And, uh, so I really appreciate you coming here and being here tonight. Thank you.
Claude?
No, thank you both for being here tonight. Um, a couple of points, a couple of questions. I guess the questions are, what type of engagement did you have with offsite consultants to bring through the training process? And, um, the timeframe involved in that? And then also, how are you measuring success? We'll understand.
So actually, um, I am a trainer. I actually was the one who developed the trainings that, that we began to take Auburn through. Uh, we have partnered, so there's other opportunities. So for example, we have sent cohorts of folks to Courageous Conversation, which is based on Glenn Singleton's work. We partnered, um, with Deep Equity, which was around culturally responsive instruction practices specific to classroom. I think one of the biggest things to think about is that, um, everyone doesn't learn the same way, right? And so, so we were very intentional about figuring out, okay, this might work really well for this group, but maybe we could bring something else in for this group. So understanding that people learn differently and resonate with things differently. And so, um, we've kind of, we have kind of a, a few things going on in our district. Um, but to begin with, the, the racial equity trainings, I was actually the one who, who developed it and began doing those trainings. Now, as far as what we've seen as outcomes, um, there's actually been some really amazing things. So we have, um, more students than ever who, because we've changed our approach to how we identify kids as highly capable, now we have to add classrooms, because we don't have enough space for the kids who are identified as highly capable. Um, we have had, um, in our, in our achievement data, those gaps are beginning to close in certain areas, so you're not seeing the disparity that exists, because those gaps are closing. Um, the one area that I think that we do need to still work on is our discipline, because there's areas of discipline that are quite subjective, and again, it's that adult learning around, you know, maybe you might not be co, so comfortable with a particular student behaving a certain way, um, if he doesn't necessarily look like you. So we see, so we see disproportionality, so what that basically means, and just for, if you don't know, um, you can have a student of color do the exact same offense as, as a not, a white student, and that student of color is disciplined two and a half times more than the white student, and that's documented in our district. That also is, that's a nationwide issue, it's also a state issue. So we're trying to figure out, what is the adult response then? Because it's the adults who decide the punishment, right? And why then would the adult be having a different punishment for this student than this student? So it's actually, but it's having that conversation, because sometimes they don't really realize that's what they're doing. So, so bringing up those things, so that's an area of work. Um, we're implementing an ethnic studies course for the very first time, and the importance of that is, it's really important to think about what our kids learn about who they are in our history. Our history is not favorable, the way that it concurrently exists to all of our kids and all of our cultures. So it's very important for our students to, for us to recognize, what are we teaching our kids about themselves? And what does that do to their self-esteem and their value in our society and in our community? And so it's really, so we're very intentional around teaching our kids the value of the contributions of their cultures and the value of their space in our history. And so we're very intentional about that, so those are just a few of the things that we've had going on, but we do have measurable outcomes that exist right now.
Just, just to follow up that, so with the educators, the teachers themselves, how have they embraced this and what have you seen as a positive result in their training and how they're approaching the students?
Yeah, so, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Um, sure. So we've had three cohorts of teachers go through the deep equity training with Howard, um, Gary Howard, sorry, and then, um, the regional summits for Courageous Conversations About Race, those are two-day summits, and then also the national conferences, and from Auburn High School, we've probably had fifteen or so people go through that. Teachers are often surprised, because they don't know, because we didn't learn when we were in school. I am amazed at how much I don't know about our own history. And so sometimes there's this, oh my gosh, I have so much to learn, like, how come I don't know these things? Um, for some teachers, it's, it's hard, because it's a, I, we were taught to be colorblind, everybody's equal, right? So we've done a lot of really intentional work around the difference between equality and equity. How do we provide access? And just because we're saying this doesn't mean that I'm holding you accountable, because you're a, a white teacher. There's, there's a way to say that this happened and it was told from this lens, um, and I'm white, but I know that I didn't have slaves, but that doesn't mean that I can't say slavery was horrible and that, that we have some work to do around that. We need to be able to talk about that. But we also have to not just talk about slavery, we have to talk about every contribution, and for kids to understand that, um, there's so much history that they don't have access to. So I'm super excited about this course. We're, we're really excited, it's an elective course, I would love to see it be a required course.
And we do have some people who push back. So we do have some people who are not, not really wanting to engage, and, and they do have, and, you know, we are who we are, we, we are, you know, honestly, if you think about it, so I use the example, I believe Seattle School District was, was finally desegregated in nineteen seventy-eight. All of it, I mean, I was, you know, I was eight years old at that time, so in our generation, our parents, so it's, it's a system that we grew up in, separation, and, and so trying to really undo those experiences can be hard, and we do realize we can undo it with everybody. But my philosophy is, I, I would love for you to believe to, about every kid, that every kid can be successful and that we need to change, but if you don't, then I would like for you to behave your way into believing. When you see the outcomes and the, the, the change in relationship that you have and those things, that my hope is that they will change your, you know, because it's a hard issue, it really is, it's a hard and belief system issue. And recognizing, we can't, we might not be able to change everybody, but those that we can, hopefully they'll be champions, and when you see the results of what's happening, then people will be more open to change.
Councilmember Baggett has a comment.
Again, thank you for coming and sharing your experiences with us. Uh, I've heard about the students, I've heard about the teachers, what about the parents at the family level and the home? Because the students will go home, I, I'm hoping they will share their experiences with the parents and perhaps change the attitude or perception, uh, with, with the family unit.
my philosophy is, I, I would love for you to believe about every kid, that every kid can be successful and that we need to change. But if you don't, then I would like for you to behave your way into believing. When you see the outcomes and the, the change in relationship that you have, and those things, that my hope is that they will change your, you know, because it's a heart issue. It really is. It's a heart and belief system issue. And recognizing, we can't, we might not be able to change everybody, but those that we can, hopefully they'll be champions. And when you see the results of what's happening, then people will be more open to change.
Councilmember Baggett has a comment.
Again, thank you for coming and sharing your experiences with us. I've heard about the students. I've heard about the teachers. What about the parents at the family level and the home? Because the students will go home. I, I'm hoping they will share their experiences with the parents and perhaps change the attitude or perception with, with the family unit. Have you had any experience in finding out how that experience has actually developed at all?
Yeah, so we can both speak to that. So I'll start. So I will share. So that's where you come in. Because the reality is, is that we do get pushed back from parents, as I said. There are people who don't want to have this conversation and, and have been brought up, as Deanna said, to be colorblind. They don't see color. And not understanding that if you don't see the color of my skin, you don't see a part of me and who I am. Just like if you don't see that I'm a woman, you don't see a part of me and who I am. And so really changing that narrative, because it is an uncomfortable space. We have had some parents that come in. So I'd say for the most part, parents are extremely supportive. We do have some, though, that have been concerned and have not necessarily agreed with the direction. We do our best to educate and to share our why. And our why is because, again, we, we really want to honor the children that are in our school district, each of the children. We should be able to honor and respect and show value for every single one of our kids that enter our doors. And to do that, we have to be able to share information about them and share their cultural perspectives and make them, make them a part of what we're doing. And unfortunately, everyone doesn't necessarily feel that way. And so that's, and that is a challenge, but that's something that we are, we're working through, we're not backing down from. And so it's, we're not. And so, but as a community, I believe, if we come together and begin to have, you know, have these conversations and share in some of the work and the diversity of the community and, and begin to value that from a, from a city and community perspective, it can't just be the school district valuing the cultural differences. It's gotta be the city and everyone, right? Because this is who we are. And so if we can begin to value from that level as well, then they'll, people will see, oh, my gosh, yes, maybe this is something that I need to reconsider. And maybe this is something, because it is important and it's who we are. And so I think that, that's kind of the perspective that, that's helpful.
I would just add anecdotally that I have worked with several families of color whose kids who have had that history of discipline and have come in ready to fight. And I, and I don't fight with them. I listen. And I say lots of things about, this is the work we're trying to accomplish. So I would say anecdotally, the responses have been great from families of color. It's kind of been a, oh, that are not used to being given some time to, to talk, to say the things that are true for them. I would also say that from the data perspective, every two years, our district completes the, a data, a survey for students, staff, and parents, families, Centers for Educational Excellence. And they have added some specific questions around equity. So I think that we have seen improvement and excitement from parents. They want to know more about it.
And we absolutely have. So our data just came out. We absolutely have, because our data just came out. And the, the, so there's questions around, do you feel as though your student is represented in the culture of your, you know, what you're teaching? Do you feel welcome in your buildings? And those numbers have went up across the board. So we have a lot of really good data to support that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to point out that the city of Ritten started a, an equity program six or seven years ago, maybe eight years ago. And they won a National League of Cities Award for their program two or three years ago. And this year, Dennis Law, mayor of Ritten, in his State of the City address, almost entirely was about the progress the city of Ritten has made with their very diverse community and the economic impact that that has brought to the city of Ritten. And I think most of us were at that State of the City address. So when I see something that was accomplished by a city that's roughly our size and another South End city, I, I find it very encouraging. But I'm still motivated, and I know you all are sick and tired of me quoting from Dr. King, but I'm about ready to leave. So, one more time. And I'm gonna have to paraphrase because I don't have it in front of me. But Dr. King wrote this while he was in the Birmingham Jail. And it's known as Letter, Letter from the Birmingham Jail. And it's, it's quite passionate. And he wasn't writing this letter to, who he was writing this letter to were the other ministers, generally the white ministers out there who were supporting of civil rights, but were backing, pushing it a little too far, Dr. King. Ease up a little bit. But that, that's who his focus of this letter was to. And the salient part to me is, and again, this is a paraphrase, not an exact quote, "You can't be all that you can be until I am all that I can be. I can't be all that I can be until you are all that you can be. Such is the interconnectivity of life." And Auburn is this rich tapestry of culture, genders, races, belief system, religions. And that doesn't make us weaker, it makes us stronger. It makes us more interesting, both in our choices of, of food and how we interact with one another and the cultural festivals out there that we celebrate. It's, it's not something to be afraid of. And I think where we get some pushback from people of privilege, like myself, is that we don't see ourselves as knowingly racist. We don't see ourselves as knowingly obstructionist. But in fact, sometimes we need a mechanism, a prog, a consultant, a teacher, a coach, however you want, a program, to help us have a dialogue with one another so that in a safe space, we can discuss things that are difficult to talk about, like race, like ethnicity, like religious background. And it's particularly hard in current times. But we can actually benefit from it. Larry Brown, labor leader, John Holman, police captain, had a conversation last week, and that both our backgrounds have some pretty embarrassing, tragic examples of racism, you know, overt racism. And the first part of that understanding of how we get to be where we need to be is to admit the mistakes that we've had, or acknowledge the stuff we didn't even realize that we were doing. And that evolves over time. You said you've been involved in it since you were seventeen. Well, in nineteen sixty-eight, I took the very first black history course at Central Washington University. Not because I was passionate, but I needed a two-hundred level history course to graduate.
I will just put out there that our kids are so ready for this and they want to learn. I took eight kids, myself and one other adult chaperone from the school. We took eight kids on a mini civil rights trip over midwinter break. We went to Birmingham. We went to Selma. We went to Atlanta. We went to Montgomery, where the first, the first national monument and memorial for victims of lynching was just opened by the Equal Justice Initiative. These kids are hungry. They, they want to know. And it wasn't just, it wasn't black kids. It was a mix. They, they want to go. And these are kids who want to become, they want to become police officers. They want to understand the history of their country and they want to be able to engage in those conversations. So it's exciting times.
I have a couple of questions. How involved has the school board been in this movement?
Very. So I actually, so I've done trainings, I've trained our school board. I've done trainings with the deep equity work. They are, we do workshops and trainings with them periodically. So they're very, they're on the core team. So two school board members are on the core team and have been since the beginning. They're very involved and supportive of this work.
Has, has the school board been, or the school district been tracking the costs for this movement?
Well, part of the benefit is, like I said, they kind of have an in-house person. So that's been minimal. There's, it's been a little bit minimal. But we have, we have partnered with outside organizations. So yes, there are, there are figures that are, that are, that can be tied to the cost of the different, the different trainings. And so I would say, compared to the return on investment, it's been minimal. It's been minimal. So probably one of our most expensive was around our deep equity work. But, but yes, they have been tracking.
How has this program been documented for, for history purposes?
So it's not, it's, I wouldn't consider it a program, I think. What, what, it's a series of professional development is what it really is. It's really just teaching. So it's not, when I think about a program, I think of something that you do for a certain amount of time for, to achieve a certain goal, a specific outcome. This is actually the way we are, Auburn's goal is to change the way we do business.
It's a culture.
It's a culture shift. So it's not a program. This is not going to end. This is something that we have committed to. It's in our strategic plan. It's in our policies. We're committed to this work. So it's a continual professional, it's a continual development. So I, we have trainings. I offer trainings at every waiver day. We have, so the, one of the first groups that we trained was they, our admin, administrative department thought it was so important, they shut the entire admin building down. Assistant superintendents were answering the phones so that everyone in our building could be trained. We did it over two days. So they made sure that every single administrator was trained in, in what we were doing and what we're talking about. So it's very important to us. It's not, I like to say it's a shift in how we do business, not a program.
So two days, would that equate to sixteen hours then?
No, it was only a two-day. So it was a two-hour training. So I did a two-hour training for them. And so it was in the afternoon. We offered it one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
So, so would that be four hours then?
The initial training was four hours. It, it keeps going. So the training's continually offered.
If you're looking for some, like, dollar amount to quantify, I can just give you an example. So the Pacific Education Group there are the ones, Glenn Singleton's organization that offers Beyond Diversity One. They have a regional summit in Bellevue every June. You can sign up to go for four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for two, eight hours of training. So sixteen hours for five hundred dollars per person. And that is the training that I went to where I went, oh, my gosh, look how much I don't know.
And we send folks, so we sent sixty-five people to that last year. We, so we send, I would say, over the course of the last four or so years, our district, we've probably trained close to eight hundred folks. It's something. And a lot of it, like I said, I do trainings for waiver days, so classified, certificated. I've been to buildings. I did a training for the maintenance staff for Tacoma School District and Ritten School District, about four hundred maintenance folks. I'm doing one for eight hundred this summer because they're including Ritten in that. I appreciate you bringing up Ritten because I was there for eight years before I came here. But, so, so there's a lot that's happening. And so, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor?
Absolutely.
One of the things that's important to understand is there is no one way to get there.
Exactly.
And what we have brought forward with a consultant, and I believe you're aware and you know our consultants that we're looking to work with, I think you've worked with them, with Denise. There is no one way to get there. And perhaps what works best for the school district is not going to be the best approach for the city of Auburn with our, with our teams. Perhaps it is, but there is just not any one way to get there. Our makeup is different, right? We are not working with students every day, but we are responsible. And as the leaders, the elected leaders of the city, there is an expectation that we are going to act in such a way that we are respectful and providing an equitable opportunity for every citizen in our community, every resident. Let me rephrase that to resident. And so we may have some different needs and focuses than perhaps the teachers have, or perhaps they are quite similar, but we don't know until we start this work. And the intent is never to make anyone the bad guy, right? That, that doesn't get us anywhere. It is not a matter of, you're a horrible person because you're a white male and look what you've done to this world, to this country over centuries. It is, this is where we are today. This is where we want to go. Let's start on the journey. Regardless of whether you're here or here or here, the journey needs to begin and we all need to be brought along at some, not always comfortable pace, but we have to begin that journey. And while, you've heard me say it, while we may not intentionally be doing something to harm individuals in our community, we can certainly be far more intentional about ensuring the equity with not just race, but sexual orientation, age, ability, all of these different issues, all of these different opportunities for us to make a very, very rich community. We have so many opportunities in front of us that I am so excited that we begin this journey. It's just, we need to begin the journey.
Thank you.
I would say, don't, don't wait for training. There's lots of books. There's great movies. There's great podcasts. I am happy to send you a list of different things. If you have two minutes, watch this TED Talk. If you have an hour, sit down and watch this movie. If you have three days, read this book. I've got a bunch.
I think.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think the biggest issue here with the council is the forty-hour training that has been talked about and the cost. And since the reporter put this on the paper last week, at church, I just got bombarded by some of my fellow church congregation people asking me, why is it needed? Is it gonna make a, a change? Is it gonna change people's and the community's thoughts and, and the way that they think and everything? And I go, well, it's not, we're not really focusing. We are, but we're right now starting out with our departments and our, and our, and our council and our staff to get everybody trained and to be on the same page. And I use some different scenarios of what's happened and what if, you know, a person decided to file a lawsuit. The cost of that would be more than, than what we're paying for this training. And so they didn't see it that way. And so I spent an hour and a half drinking coffee with people after church about this topic. And I hope they, they hear me, you know, because they just says, well, that's our taxpayers' money. And I go, well, it's going to go to all the departments. And that we have a, how many departments in our, and they're gonna train all of their people. And so that's why I, I am for us really going forward with this. As Nancy said, we gotta start somewhere. And we've got it at the table now. So why wait two, three more years? The problem's here. Let us face it.
It's not all training. Let's just make sure that we're clear that this contract is not, you sit in a room and you are going to learn everything that you need, even in a forty-hour training, whether it's two hours, four hours, forty hours. We are not going to learn everything that we need to know in that amount of time. But it's the opportunity to engage in those conversations and to understand where we are at and perhaps start to understand the goals and where we need to go and determine what that path is to get there. Some of the contract, if you looked at the, the individual items, some of that is consulting time to talk about strategy, right? It's not just the training and it's not just by one individual. There are opportunities. Our police go up to the academy. I believe Dr. Mark's bill, did you say, comes in twice a month?
Yeah, sometimes once, sometimes twice a month.
To, to talk with officers in this region about racial equity. And he makes it fun, right? It, it doesn't have to be this, oh, my God, fire and brimstone type, you're a horrible person. Why, why are you so far behind in this? That is not what this is about. This is about finding where we are at and how we can move forward. And be more than just a, a we are inclusive community sign, right? The signs have been up for a long time. We may as well start to prove that those signs really mean that's who we The signs have been up for a long time. We may as well start to prove that those signs really mean that's who we are.
Yes.
Very quickly, I appreciate you bringing up the trainings and the books and the films that are up. I am indeed president of the Washington State Labor Council and I'm proud to say that the Washington State Labor Movement is deeply enmeshed in this work. And recently was able to view a very powerful film, At the River I Stand. And it, and it, my fellow councilman Holman here talked about Martin Luther King. This is a story of his time in Memphis, Tennessee, where he was there to support the striking sanitation workers and gave his life supporting working people in their fight for justice on the job. And learned a little bit about intersectionality, you know, with respect to these issues that come together. But that's a really powerful film, if you want to see that. Thank you.
I understand some directors want to make a comment. Here's your chance.
All right, I'll go first. So I'm sort of on the same learning curve, I think, as a lot of us in the room. And so when I think about this issue, I, I think about it from what does it mean in the world of community development? And right, wrong, or indifferent, I start to sort some of these issues out by the human issues and then the, the policy and process areas. So I in no way know where I'm going in the future down this path as a human and what's going to, what I'm going to learn, what will enlighten me about myself and about our community. But I did think that I'd throw out a few tangible outcomes that really hit on, in areas of policy with respect to community development. So to me, what I look forward to is being able to look at our zoning regulations and, and how we define zoning districts. We put those boundaries on a map. And when we create those boundaries on a map, what kind of boundaries are we creating out in the community? That would be an example of an area we look at. Business licensing procedures. What does it take for someone to enter into the business market, to start a business? And do we accidentally have barriers in place that advantage some members of our community and disadvantage other members of our community? Things like how we define family, how we define standards within our housing codes and healthy housing regulations. How our land use regulations may affect investment within our community. And you have, again, disadvantaged areas of the city and we have more advantaged areas. So do we have barriers in place that, that affect investment into, into all of our areas of, of the community? The list is longer than that. There are enforcement standards. There are just how we interact with folks at the front counter or on the telephone. Who are we welcoming to? Who are we not so welcoming to? So to me, while I, while I, again, don't know where I'm going as a person, eager to learn, but those, I do have this kind of list of things that I think will be interesting to explore to see if there are bias or inequities that are created without any intent. So from a community development perspective, those are a few of the things that, that I'm looking forward to working on.
Yeah. I'd like to add a few things. I think from Parks Arts and Recreation, we're really similar to the school district in that we have found that probably about 40% of the youth in our program are, are white youth. And yet our volunteerism is probably 90% of white adults. And so how are we reaching our, our publics to make sure that everybody feels like they're invited to participate? So I think the equity lens is so important. And it's not that the staff is sitting there over there saying, oh, this is our current policy or procedure. It's just kind of how we've always done it. And are we actually looking at things through that right lens? When we're booking shows at the Auburn Ave and it's all the tribute bands happen to be old 1970s and 80s rock and roll bands. And that audience isn't reflective of our community, but it sells out the house. But is that always the goal versus having equity in your community? When you're doing park design, is it based on, oh, how the parks look like when we were all kids? Or is it really based on what the reflective design of our community is now? So I think there's a lot of things that we can learn from this. I don't think anybody's sitting over in our department saying we're intentionally trying to do anything but our best. But I really look forward to the process. I can learn a lot. I remember when our senior center, we started working with Latino population one day a week. And now it's even grown from that. And we found out right away that our meals at lunch were completely non-reflective of what they wanted to eat. So that was like the next step. Bradine didn't sit over there saying, oh, let's do non-Latino meals, but it just didn't come to mind. And so those things happen. And I think it's going to be a great process and I hope we can all get on board. And Denise, I've worked with you on other projects and compliments to you and your team. It's good stuff.
Any other directors that want, any staff up there?
First of all, thanks for coming. So, I'm sorry. I just got a few, I won't take long, Bill, I promise. Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to obviously echo what I'm hearing today, but you know, from a law enforcement perspective, this kind of issue always hits home for us and it's daily. I would say from the majority of the employees in this city who actually reach out and touch the majority of our citizens every day is it's our law enforcement officers. We go to over 90,000 calls a year and under that could be multiple people that we, we contact and interact with. And so when I think about this, it, to me, it also bleeds into the law enforcement of creating, always adding to that, that pot of goodwill and creating that trust and transparency. I know Denise partaked in a Blue Courage training we did a couple of years ago. And what's important for us in law enforcement, one of the things we understand and what really hold true is, is our ability to be trusted by the community. And that is to be transparent, accountable. And sometimes I think we get one facet of the public that actually might be all for law enforcement. But I know that there's another facet, perhaps, of people of color that might not be. And I think one of the things we, I look at specifically is we always have to be striving to make that connection. Because sometimes people, if we think we're doing things really well, sometimes others might not think that. And sometimes that's people of color because they some, at times may not feel comfortable talking to us. So we're always trying to bridge that gap and improve in that area. So when I see training like this, although the police department's been involved in this for quite some time. I had a chance to go see Dr. Marx a year ago and I think he did a great training. I think it would benefit everybody in the city to listen. I was telling the mayor earlier that he has a way of making everybody in that room feel as though you do have biases, but that doesn't mean you're a bad person. And really, to me, when he made those comments, that really resonated with me. And you can see the majority of the chiefs and sheriffs in that room who happen to be white males, you could actually see them actually sit back in their seats and actually take it in because they didn't feel like they were being attacked. And it was well received. And it probably took Dr. Marx 45 minutes to get out of that room because everybody was around him wanting to get him there. And so now he teaches once a month at the Criminal Justice Training Center because all of us chiefs and sheriffs in this region understand the importance of it. And I'd like to reiterate, if he were to impact the employees here, you would see, it would really spark a great conversation. It wouldn't be a program check the box. People would really buy into it and we could really move forward. So, thanks.
Thank you. Does council have any other comments? Because I have a few to close it out, I guess. Anyway, I was in the U.S. Navy. I was on a big heavy cruiser. And I was in the real Navy. Nowadays, they have compartments. They have zippers on their fly and all this stuff. We didn't have that. We had 13 buttons to unravel. And I could do it pretty quick after four years. But I was thrown in in a ship of 1,300-plus complement, crew and officers. We had all kinds of diversity, all kinds. In fact, my bunkmate was a black African from New York. I slept that close to him, six inches. I didn't have any problem at all. Every ethnic group had a, had a slang name. Italian, a WAP. And there were other ones that were not as dignified. So you and I, Claude, were WAPs. Yes, we are. And I made it through the four years. No problems at all. None. Zip. I fit right in with everyone. So I was real curious about this. So I, I Googled racial equity. And there were 10-plus links. I mean, everybody is writing about equity. So council wants to learn more, just Google that. I brought up Starbucks. They had, we all know that. That was recent, I think, last year and a half maybe. Four-hour training, they closed down all the shops for a half a day. And it was millions of dollars of lost profit. They had a saying, slang saying, slogan. Color brave, not color blind. And then they had, there was a, an item, Racial Equity Institute. This was in Cleveland, Ohio. They had a partnership where there were 68 community organizations being trained in equity. One thing I didn't see on the list though was the city of Cleveland. I don't know if that was a mistake or probably was. Also, it's kind of interesting, there are paperback books, anywhere from $13 to $30 on workplace training. And there's another, another organization, Supervisor Employee, $30, 60-minute training. Then there are two, and they get into psychology, big time, big time psychology. There was a PhD, his name is Lee, L.E.E., Jussim, J.U.S.S.I.M. Mandatory Implicit Bias Training is a Bad Idea. This is the other side of the coin. Another one, Jesse, Single, S.I.N.G.A.L. Psychology's Favorite Tool for Measuring Racism Isn't Up to the Job. So what I'm looking at here is the, the bad and the good, or the good and the bad, however you want to look at it. So that's the way we should look at this thing. And we're going to have an opportunity in the next week or two before this comes to council for a vote on July 15th. And we should really examine this thoroughly because it is important. I hate biasness. I hate it. I lived four years aboard a ship and I didn't see any of it, none of it. We all went out to liberty together, black, white, yellow, whatever you want to call it. And we, we performed our duties excellently. Every Navy ship of the day had an opportunity to be an excellent ship. We had a big E up on our superstructure because of the way we worked together as a team. And I, I just hope that we examine this 100% from our heart. So, do you have any further closing remarks?
I actually do, if you don't mind. I do appreciate your sentiment. I believe you shared that story with me when we did the race training that you attended when I did it for the Green River Foundation. We had that two-hour workshop together. And I would just encourage you to think about, yes, definitely, when you're in a close quarters and you're forced to be in a situation with a group of people for a certain amount of time, definitely you have to work together in order to be successful. I would wonder how that has translated since then. And when we talk about diversity and bringing people together, I think looking around in our circles and in our experiences and it's very easy for that to fall off when you lose that close proximity. And with regards to books, yes, absolutely. You can be educated by books and by Google. But I think any educator will tell you that you need someone to facilitate those conversations. We can't just give kids a group of books and expect them to learn. Doctors don't just get a group of books and expect them to come physicians. There's practice, there's procedures, there's facilitation. All of that has to happen with learning. And I think in particular with this subject, it really is just about learning with each other and learning how to be better for each other. And so I think that, yes, you can find a lot of, I think any topic in the world, you can find conflicting information on, on any, any subject. There's always two sides. I think that when you consider what is the outcome and what are the goals? I don't think you can go wrong if you're just trying to better opportunities for community members and better... So me, I do professional development to better who I am and how I show up and how I am, how I interact with other people, how I interact professionally and personally. To me, it's very important for me to develop myself as a human and as a person, because I don't understand it all. Even as a person of color, I make mistakes and I do things as well. But I think it's important not to limit learning to what you can read. I think experience is, is huge. And I believe experiences are what, what make the difference. And so I appreciate that.
I would just add that the sentiment of good and bad, I'm not sure if you were referring to equity or really being stewards of, of public monies. And I think that's, that's the agreement pieces that it is a big financial commitment and there is some responsibility to the whole community. So making sure that you're getting the, the most bang for your buck, I guess, in layman's terms. There's lots of things to, to investigate.
Oh yeah, there's lots of options. There's definitely lots of, I'm not sure what you're, but there's lots of options out there. I'm not sure what that, if, what you guys are...
And Color Brave is a great TED Talk too, just so you know. There's a TED Talk about that.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to item three on the agenda. 2019 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
Hello. Good evening. In your packet, you received a resolution for the Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan. Who are you? Oh, I'm Shelley, the current as director with the city of Auburn.
Let me ask you a quick question. Are the King County people going to come up?
They are. They are. But I'm, I'm just prefacing, prefacing this. Because there is a resolution the city will need to pass. And they kindly offered upon our request to come out and give an update to the council, once again, where we're at with the plan, how far we've come, that the county's adopted it and the cities have 75% of the population, the cities with that population, King County, need to pass it within a certain time. And that goes to the state and that'll be final. But they're, they're going to go through all that. But I have the resolution here for your review and it'll be on council agenda next week, hopefully for adoption. So with that, Pat McLaughlin and Dorian Crawler from King County Solid Waste and Jennifer to answer any questions you may have.
Deputy Dean, Deputy Mayor, Counsel. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Pat McLaughlin and I serve as King County's Director of Solid Waste. And just want to commend... and just want to commend the conversation and actions that your city is exploring in a number of areas, not the least of which is equity. Our county executive, Dow Constantine, shares your passion in this area and recently established what he calls his True North, which is to make King County a welcoming community where all people can thrive. And that's a very difficult and daunting task, but a very critical one. Even the plan that we're going to talk about tonight, we're going to talk about garbage, we're going to talk about recycling, has some important elements to address inequities in how we're serving, even in your community. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And I also just want to say at the top end that this plan was developed in concert with the cities. So you have had and continue to have a tremendous ambassador for your city on our Solid Waste Advisory Committee called Ms. Whack. We have a few of them, or of course, your Deputy Mayor, Bill Pelosi, a long-term enthusiastic contributor, but also Joe Nelson here on my right has been just a tremendous contributor as well. So I want you to know upfront that certainly anything you see here that you like, you can attribute to your ambassadors in that regard. I want to be respectful of your time, and so I'll move relatively quickly through the presentation to allow for time for any dialogue questions that you may have, and I'm happy to drill at any depth that you would find useful. This regional system serves virtually all of King County, all except for the city of Seattle and the city of Milton. The city of Seattle has their own solid waste system, the city of Milton is served by the Pierce County system. But the remaining thirty-seven cities, the unincorporated parts of the county and about one and a half million residents generate a lot of garbage, almost a million tons of garbage each year. One of the best features of our system is it's a partnership of both public and private entities. So as you know, as a city, the city of Auburn contracts for and sets the standards for collection of waste and recycling within the city. So for your residents, multifamily, single family, and even your businesses, that's handled under the direction of the city or those individual businesses. But in contract with the county, we handle the planning, the transfer and ultimate disposal of the waste that is generated within that regional system. But there's a great concert of private actors and the public sector working together. And as a result of that, regionally, we have attained some of the highest levels of recycling in the nation. So it's something to be really, really proud of, but it's also a reflection of that great partnership that's in play. The plan that we're talking about tonight is a plan that's required under state law to ensure that every regional system is benefiting from a long-range plan. It's a policy document that guides the activities for the next six to twenty years in our regional system. And I mentioned at the top end, this is a plan that's been in the works for a few years now. And the point, as indicated on this graph, is at the city approval process. So we've gone through the development and the input of our advisory committees, our regional policy committee has also taken action. Again, we appreciate the representation through your Deputy Mayor, through our RPC. Our council at a county level has approved it, and it's now up to the cities to take action over a hundred-and-twenty-day period that ends on September sixteenth. Within the plan itself, there are six major planning elements. We're not going to talk about all six tonight. In fact, I'd like to really focus on three specific areas. But just to orient you to the plan as a whole, it covers really setting the landscape of the system, talks about key data forecasting elements, what we commonly refer to as recycling or sustainable materials management, transfer, disposal, and financial policies as well. As I mentioned, though, there's really three areas that I think are probably of greatest interest to your city. And it's really where some of the most significant policy decisions are reflected in the plan. So I'd like to begin with sustainable materials management, what, again, we often have referred to as recycling. And within this plan, you'll see that there's a full suite of options available to cities. This is really reflecting the voice that the cities have put forward in this planning document to have the ability to customize our recycling programs in a way that is most sensible for your communities and the unique needs and interests. And so that's what the policies allow for within this comprehensive plan. I mentioned that we do have some very admirable recycling levels. Fifty-four percent is the average that we've achieved in King County. That's nearly twice that of the national average. There's a roadmap within this plan that could drive that much higher, however, up to as much as seventy percent. If we continue to allow this menu of choices, we may not get there. I think the challenge that we actually have is to harmonize our approach so that recycling doesn't look so different when you cross the border from Auburn to Algonah or Tetequilla, or even to Redmond and Woodenville. What we really need to do is no matter where you live, work, or play in King County, that recycling is much the same. Because one of the things that's getting in the way is confusion. That confusion breeds contamination, and you've heard about contamination even at an international level where China, who used to be a huge buyer of recycling products, has said no more. And that was largely due to the contamination that was within that recycling stream. So we've got an action plan that could get us to a much higher level, and what you'll be hearing from the county in the years to come is the encouragement of all of us, both the unincorporated areas and the cities, to harmonize our approach. And I think that will yield some substantial benefits for us. The second area we want to talk about is transfer and processing. This is really referring to what happens to the collected garbage between the curbside and the landfill. Of course, it goes through our transfer stations, and you're most locally served by the Algonah Transfer Station. It's a classic transfer station, been around a long time, right, nineteen sixty-five. It's well past its designed use, and I think you know well that we have begun the design of a new transfer station. It's going to be a modern facility, and it's going to serve your constituents quite well. This is an important process that, this modernization has begun several years ago. There's really two stations remaining, which is Algonah, and I'll talk about the Northeast facility here in a moment. The Algonah Transfer Station is slated to open in its new format by 2023. It's going to bring a full suite of recycling, hazardous materials, collection, and other features that have not been available to many in this community for as long as we've been operating. So we're excited to modernize those services and bring a level of equity that is missing in this part of the county. And so when we talked earlier about equity, this is an example of how we can do a better job. But the same is needed in the Northeast part of the county, one of the fastest-growing parts of our region. And it's also served by a very old open-air transfer station where we struggle to minimize the impacts of our operational controls, whether it's noise, odor, and dust, and they have minimal levels of recycling. So we have our vision to build, site and build a new Northeast transfer station, bringing more modern and equitable services to that region as well. Finally, we'll talk about disposal. Quite honestly, you know, our Sustainable Materials Management Transfer Decisions and Policy Framework, very, very important, but arguably the most important policy decision that's reflected in this plan update is around disposal. We have benefited from a local landfill option since nineteen sixty-five, and it has continued to provide the lowest cost and most environmentally responsible disposal option for this region. However, under its built capacity, we will run out of space in less than ten years. Actually, by about twenty, two thousand twenty-eight, we will be out of capacity at Cedar Hills. So the alternatives that were explored included waste export, as the city of Seattle does, waste to energy, as is done in other parts of the country and the world, and continuing to maximize the remaining capacity at Cedar Hills. And that's what this plan actually calls for, is maximize the remaining capacity. We can do so at the least cost to the ratepayer, but also at the least impact to the environment because we don't have to transport that waste hundreds of miles elsewhere, nor do we have to deal with some of the environmental impacts associated with the waste-to-energy option. Now, that will last us for a while, not forever, and so planning must continue. But we do believe that by commencing a final development at Cedar Hills, it gives us an adequate planning runway to move forward. And we'll have to choose yet another disposal alternative when Cedar Hills reaches its final capacity. In the process of this plan, we have been reminded of the importance of protecting not just our employees and the environment, but also being a good neighbor in conducting the operations of our facilities, be it transfer stations or the landfill. And we included a slide here to speak to some of the topics that have been expressed of interest by our neighbors and by our customers to affirm to you that we continue to operate an award-winning facility. It's not an easy process, and we're not perfect, but we're doing a great job in terms of managing the environmental aspects of the landfill specifically, in terms of monitoring the regional aquifer that resides within the landfill, as well as managing the gas collection system. We're fortunate that we don't just collect and destroy that gas, but through, again, a public-private partnership, harvest renewable energy from the landfill gas, enough to heat nineteen thousand homes every year. So in fact, we do have waste-to-energy in play as it stands today. But we also have occasional odors, and we take those very seriously. And we've trained actually staff who are certified as, and this is no joke, nasal rangers. They go through a special certification process for their ability to not just identify that there is an odor present, but the characteristics of that odor, to understand the root cause and ability to deal with those. And so we have staffed our...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, you know, they have oflacometers, another interesting term, right, to ensure that they can accurately identify.
I have a really quick question on that. These folks that go and smell, they're not the ones that are there full-time, are they? Because they get accustomed to that smell.
Well, they could if they didn't use the oflacometer. And the oflacometer actually helps to give them a neutral odor zone when they're doing their detection. So, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And they're trained to be able to distinguish between odors and non-odors, things that we might, as laypeople, you know, get used to. So there's a very prescribed technique that they follow. And then there are operational conditions and practices that we've approached as well to minimize odor and offset off-site impacts, including wildlife management, which is, if you haven't had the opportunity to tour our facility, we'd be happy to do so. And most of our landfill, and I think the opening slide was kind of an indication of it, it doesn't look like a landfill, most of it looks like a bit of a wildlife preserve because it is nestled in a very pretty part of our county. I mentioned, though, that the planning has to continue. This is a very good and robust plan that will carry our regional systems for the next twenty years. But we are committed to continue the planning mechanism to ensure that whatever our next disposal option is after Cedar Hills, it's not constrained by time. Right now, this is the most sensible approach, but we may want to explore waste-to-energy, we may want to explore waste export or some other approach, and this plan assures that we'll have the full suite of options and not be constrained by time. And we can evaluate what makes sense over the next approaching planning period. So the last slide really just speaks to this city approval process. It's really up to cities to determine whether or not this plan will be adopted. I will say that two cities have acted favorably so far, the city of Woodenville and the city of Maple Valley. And we're pleased that you're also considering taking action and would be happy to answer any questions that you have to help inform that decision. The decision is made based on those cities who take action between now and September sixteenth. And providing that seventy-five percent of the population of those cities who take action do so in the affirmative, then this plan will pass, and we hope that Auburn is amongst those cities.
As a head, Joan, have we received... Yeah, okay, the comp plan asks for approval. Yeah, okay, and we have that. But I just wanted to also say that the city of Auburn did draft, under the mayor's signature, approval of the draft plan, so...
Yes, we appreciated that.
And all of these esteemed council members up here have been receiving monthly reports from me, so this should be a no-brainer. Yes?
I have to say, I have to do dumpster dive because our recycle gentleman went to empty mine out, and I did a boo-boo and threw a bunch of stuff that weren't supposed to be in there. And he says, "I'll wait until you take it all out." And I didn't want to cost our city money, so I asked him to go ahead and do his job, and if we could take it across the street, until I took out all the stuff that wasn't supposed to be in there. So they're checking.
Good.
So they're doing their job.
So, council, any other viewpoints? John?
Everything I know about solid waste, I've learned from you.
That, I feel good about that.
And I remember when I first came on the council, the warning was Cedar Hills is reaching its limit unless we start recycling. So if I learned one lesson, that was it.
Good, good.
Mattresses.
Mattress recycles, yes.
Oh, we have mattresses, yeah.
And we do read your reports, Bill.
Good, that's good. Okay, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate the partnership that the city of Auburn represents and the action that you've taken thus far. Should there be any follow-up questions or additional information we can provide, please don't hesitate to call upon us, we value your participation in the system.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And at this point, we'll take a ten-minute break.
I wasn't too happy, John.
Just scratching my legs.
You and your munching. You can't even hear me because of your munching. You know, Mr. Pelosi, I have to say, my dad had a different experience in the Navy than you. He worked in the kitchen, and he said all the Latinos had to sleep at the bottom, the bottom deck where the kitchen was. They weren't even allowed to go upstairs. Well, maybe it's different, different shifts, but... And I just found his ship on... I think I showed you a picture of his ship. I just found it on Space Station. But, yeah, he had that experience. And he was turning... And we're glad you were here for this. Did you get some of your questions answered? Are you putting heat on it? You got your wife massaging it? Well, that's good. You took care of her how many years? Well, since I've been on council.
Yeah, if you want to reach out to her, she's not a bad person at all.
I don't know what I don't know. She should go up to five years, six years.
Previously, and I think the reason people still do that is previously the previous mayor wanted a... Eric needed a sign. So, they either staff that's very trained to put it where the signature is.
You know, where's John? You know, John, I was in the march with Mr. Chavez. The person that started the march for Latinos.
You got to meet Caesar?
I was four years old. No, no, I wasn't. I was older than that when my dad took us. And then, this year, his sister, they wanted to... And that's history. That is history. I've met his sister. She came to one of my... And I ran for state representative. She came to me.
Oh, I remember those times, in the sixties and seventies.
He did a lot, a lot of good. And he's the only one that's eating it.
There you go. I got some new stuff.
Okay, time for vacation.
Well, you two are going to be gone soon.
Yes, we will.
And he's going to go and apply for that job at the...
Sniffer job. That's right up my alley.
You know, we've said all along, if it smells, give it to Bill.
Okay, the meeting will come back to order after recess. We moved four B's and B.O.I. up into the next topic, community needs assessment presentation. All right.
Mr. Tate.
Good evening, deputy mayor, council members, mayor. Jeff Tate, director of community development. First of all, I'd like to introduce to my right, from Cloud Burst Consulting, Joel Warren and Julie McFarland. I'll just spend a couple of minutes providing a little bit of an introduction, really providing an overview of what's in your agenda bill and your packet, and then turn it over to Joel and Julie to dive a little deeper into what the community needs assessment is. First of all, just a piece of history here. City council approved the 2019-2020 budget, and one of the line items that was approved in the budget was for the city to hire a consultant to go through the community needs assessment. So, Cloud Burst Consulting is the consultant that's been selected to help us through the process. Also, back on April eighth, Joy, Scott, and myself, we came to city council and provided an update of the city's need to go through its every five-year update of its CDBG consolidated plan. And you may recall that as part of that update, we did indicate that we would be conducting the community needs assessment. At that time, Cloud Burst had not joined us. And we talked about how the community needs assessment would inform that five-year process, or that five-year plan. And recall that the real needy piece that helps city council in the future is, this is sort of a foundational piece for how we end up directing CDBG dollars over the next five years. So, as we have a grant process, and we distribute CDBG funds throughout the community, this is where we start informing that process so that we have our priorities set. This is the beginning of the community needs assessment process. We wanted to make sure that Cloud Burst had the opportunity to come and speak to city council, provide a little bit of information about how that process will move forward, and start, really, the community engagement piece to help get feedback. And feedback obviously includes city council feedback, but there's other methods that Cloud Burst will talk a little bit about today. And this will be back before you in about four months or so for you to learn the outcomes. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Joel and Julie.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joel. I'm with Cloud Burst Consulting Group, as you said. Cloud Burst is in two realms mostly throughout the country. It's based in the DC area. I'm from Seattle. I work from home office, which is great. We do HUD world, pretty much. The one world is the CDBG programs and the five-year con plans, we call them, helping cities, counties, states do their five-year housing plans and using that HUD money in an efficient and effective way. Other world is the homelessness and unsheltered engagement piece. So, we help them use the HUD ESG, which is emergency solutions grant money. We help them work in the unsheltered area, in the sheltered area, within their communities as well. Myself, I fall into the community development side, so I help cities, counties, and states use that five-year money, make that five-year plan, using that strategically. As you all know, there are a lot of priorities, so it kind of gets into the prioritization piece. Before Cloud Burst, I got my MSW from a school in DC, KFQ University of America, which is a great school. I, before that, I was in the Marine Corps for six years. So, after the Marine Corps, I wanted to help veterans in DC, so I moved there, got my MSW. I was a case manager for two years there. It kind of got me into the world of...
Do you say former Marine?
Indeed, right.
Do you realize that you guys worked for the Navy Department?
Well, the special operations. I'm not sure if you remember that far, right? You were the special operations for the Navy.
Thanks for your service.
So, that's kind of how I got involved in housing and community. How about Julie say a little bit about herself?
Okay, great, thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm Julie McFarland. I have been working within the King County homeless system for about ten years. For the last five years, I've been providing national technical assistance around homeless system work and also more general HUD technical assistance, working with Cloud Burst specifically on this project. And I'm really excited to be here and I'm in some surrounding communities in Washington doing some work. And currently, I'm in Everett, Washington, actually, doing some work around their coordinated entry process and making sure that they're utilizing their limited housing resources and services in the best possible way. So, a lot of overlap, and looking forward to bringing that learning to this project.
So, this is the meat of why we're here now, to kind of talk about the whole scope. As Jeff said, it's about a four-month timeline. I have a slide later that kind of breaks the tasks down. This is the majority of it. I see it as two buckets. There's the quantitative piece, that's the data side, and I'll be taking care of that mostly. So, we're going to be talking about demographics, ten-year trends, housing analysis, current market conditions, projecting a little bit into the future. We're doing some evaluation of how money's been spent in the past, and how it's currently being spent, and some of those processes. And we'll be doing a comparative analysis to neighboring communities. I'll get into a little bit more detail about that later. So, that's the first bucket. That'll be happening concurrently with the community engagement, which will be Julie's side of the house. So, Julie will be working with Joy and her team to kind of hash out a really detailed strategy of how we're going to engage people, first of all, but then who we're going to engage and do a really thoughtful, thoughtful thing. Trying to be as inclusive as possible, getting the swath of who represents Auburn, who is Auburn, getting all the residents and not just going to one part of the community. Anything else you want to add right now about that?
No, I'm happy to dig in later.
And as part of that, we'll be doing two community surveys as well. One will be focused kind of on the residents at large, so that'll be a survey that anyone can take, the entire community. Then the second survey will be more for service providers, to kind of get their perspective of how things are going now, who they're serving, how they're serving them, and some of those outcomes. And then the third and final phase of the project will be integrating those two buckets into one report. It will be a useful tool for you all, hopefully, in your decision-making processes. We'll make it as reader-friendly as possible. Given there's a lot of data, I'll make those visually appealing and nice and readable. And the goal here is to indicate where your current goals are and how they align with the needs of the community and what we find in our work. Speaking a little bit to what I plan to look at in the data side of the house, and some of these terms, I try to spell them out. So, American community survey data, this is census data points. This is what I'll be using for the broad demographic stuff, so race, ethnicity, homeowner versus renter. Those kind of high-level, broad data points. CHAZ data, which is the comprehensive housing affordability strategy. This is more housing-focused. So, this is a data set that's specifically made for HUD by the Census Bureau. This will be getting into like cost burden, how much are people paying for housing? Is it more than thirty percent, more than fifty percent? Who are those people? If they are, are they renting, are they owning, and that kind of information. So, it'll kind of help us identify parts of this thing that gets to like low-income households, which are more likely to be using the services. So, we can kind of pin down some interesting pieces there. The point-in-time count goes along with this HMIS data we have there at the local data set. So, this is specifically for unsheltered and sheltered homelessness. The PIT count is an annual, one night a month, one night a year. You go out and you get an actual snapshot of what homelessness looks like in your community. It's a good indicator of a trend. And then the HMIS data will be that localized context that we'll be throwing into. Community comparisons, so these are the four that we had initially chosen. Lakewood, because it's a nearby community not in King County, so that'd be a good comparison. Similar HUD allocation, which means they have somewhat similar economic indicators from HUD's perspective. So, I thought that would be a useful community to look at. Federal Way in Kent, because they're in South King County. There's enough similarities there that I think the data could show some interesting differences. And then Spokane, because it's not in King County, it's not nearby. They're doing some things differently, so we can maybe make a benchmark of one place that's just very different. Community survey, I kind of already talked about. The stakeholder survey is that perspective of people who are getting services, people who are involved already with the social service programs. And the resident survey is that at-large community perspective of services.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Why Spokane?
So, we wanted at least one community not right in this region. We wanted to get out of the Seattle, King County influence, to see how other communities are doing things. And they're doing things a little bit differently, and they have more resources. I don't know if Julie can speak a little bit more to this.
Yeah, they're also a community that recently has gone through a pretty big process around changing the way that they invest in human services and have learned a lot and have some pretty good data. So, we thought it would be just a good...
Have you checked Wawa Wala? And the reason why I ask that, I just happened to turn on the channel, and the news was on, and Wawa Wala was being presented in the legislative level, an award for what they have done on the homelessness. And I've gone there, and I saw what they had. They did a camp, an encampment around the golf course, and it just went bananas. It went out of control with more drugs being there and everything, so they have done a lot of things different now. And they represented something from the legislative in Olympia here last month for what they have done in their city. So, I haven't looked at what they've done yet, but I was just curious if you guys have looked into Wawa Wala.
It's all those golfers.
What's that?
It's all those golfers.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I know building changes have done some recent work there, especially in helping them shift their shelter system to be more accessible, so we'll definitely note that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the data side?
Just the community survey, the stakeholders. Sorry, Bill.
That's all right.
No, it's not Bill, it's me.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. The stakeholders, who, what, can you give some examples of who the stakeholders are?
Yeah, so we'll get into this then right next.
Okay. All right, I thought you were going to the next slide.
So this is who we're going to be engaging with.
Oh, very good.
Perfect time.
Okay, so I'll jump into that. I will be covering this part of the work, so this is more of the qualitative side. And we will do a couple of different things. I think the survey that's going to go out to the community generally is going to be really helpful for us to identify some initial trends and what folks are saying around the gaps that exist and the strengths that exist, and we can pull from that to ask some pretty pointed questions and really dig in when we do some of the focus groups and the one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders. So when we say key stakeholders, it's a variety of folks from people who are delivering the services on the ground, and that means frontline people who are doing the work every day, to leadership within those organizations who are understanding some of the policy implications around that work. We want to get a variety of perspectives from people who are providing services. We want to especially talk with people who have lived experience and who have interacted with the human service system, especially who have interacted locally and recently because they are the people who can speak best to what the experience is, what they were able to get, and whether it was what they needed when they needed it, and what gaps they experienced as well. So that will really inform and kind of supplement the data that Joel is analyzing. We definitely want to plug into the school system, so talking with Auburn Public School and Green River College to understand what gaps they are experiencing when trying to connect students and just get a different systems perspective especially. And then we would like to have a couple of sessions with the general public where people are invited because we know that a lot of people interact with folks who either experiencing homelessness or engaged in the human service system and have a perspective around what they are needing to appropriately connect people to important services and what they're able to do now really well that maybe we need to hold on to moving forward. So that's kind of a variety of the folks that we want to engage, but we also want to be really intentional. For example, when we're looking at talking to people who are providing the services, we want to talk with people who are providing culturally tailored services, different types of services, basic needs, housing, all of those things, so that we're not just honed in on a couple of really large organizations. We really want to get to a variety of organizations, large and small, and different types of services across the board. One thing we really are looking forward to is continued engagement with the council and the Human Services Committee and really look forward to your input tonight so that we make sure that we start off in a strong direction.
Any questions?
Did I answer your question? So this is the project timeline. We had submitted this back in May, and it was signed, I think, on May 20th is when it was finalized. So this is about two to three weeks behind where we are now. Doesn't really change when the bulk of the work is going to be happening. It's going to be happening between now and early August. I think the key dates that I had, September 9th is when we'll be submitting a draft to the city for review and comment. And October 7th is our key findings summary to the city. So again, this is the timeline. We're a little bit behind right now because we're just getting started, but it doesn't change the bulk of the work that's happening in June, July, August. You'll see the task two, which was the data side, task three is that community engagement. Those will be happening concurrently. So as I uncover some things in the data and as Julie uncovers some things with community engagement, we're out to working in silos, so they'll be informing each other and informing that final document. So this is a place where we'd appreciate your feedback tonight. If you have groups you'd like us to reach out to and consider when we're looking at this, specific data points, types of data, reports that you all have liked in the past, and services you believe may be lacking in the city.
Will you have it? Mr. Begit?
I just wanted to offer that we do have a considerable number of service organizations here in the city. I, for one, are in the Lions Club, but we predominantly work with sight and hearing and children's diabetes and things of that nature. But also, I want to encourage you to talk to our nonprofits because we do, we are fortunate enough to have a number of nonprofits in the city or work with the city, and they would be a valuable resource, I would believe.
And I was just gonna say that because you've got it right here, and I belong to the Kiwanis Club in the morning, and, you know, we do have a lot of clubs that we, you could just call it their presidents, and they'd be more than glad to have you as one of their keynote speakers. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that that signage that you see with all the service clubs championed by this lady, and I think we have, what, four or six, Mayor? Four or six signs in the city? And it's, it really, it really highlights how involved the community is in service organizations, because they are invaluable to the city.
So I think I heard you suggest going and speaking about what we're doing and getting input from those groups, and also wonder if we could ask them to fill out the individual surveys to get some individual perspectives from members.
I'm sure if you brought, I'm sure whatever you brought to them, they'd be more willing to accept it and maybe fill it out while you're talking, and, because I, I know I was the president, that was my president project, and we were always looking for speakers to come to our club. And so also, the Kiwanis is always looking for speakers to come and talk to their clubs. So anyways, I'm sure the Rotary...
Likewise, Rotary, I'm Rotary, and it would be a great program to schedule you guys.
Great, yeah, thank you.
If I may...
Yes?
I just wanted to ask about, in your data collection and interfacing with the community, are you looking at it through a diversity lens as well? I mean, how do you accomplish that?
Yeah, for sure. So I think I had listed here, I didn't cover it in detail. The Opportunity Atlas is also from the Census Bureau. They do a really good job of breaking down by census tract within Auburn. I've taken a peek already, and it's 2017 data, so it's relatively new. You can choose all kinds of different variables and indicators, but the whole point of the Opportunity Atlas is to look at race, ethnicity, household status, and those kind of variables, and investigate the economic mobility and social mobility that exists, and all the variables that go into that. So for sure, that's on the tip of our minds as we consider data and community engagement.
Thank you, thank you for asking that question, because I was also going to ask that, because that's always, one that I always ask when people say that they have public workshops and this and that. Are you reaching out to our diversity groups as well? And Pat Bailey is on our Blue Ribbon Committee, she's the chair of it, and she's working right now with the Marshall Lee's and the Latino community, and we're always also looking to go into another branch of culture, different cultures. So she's probably one that also too, if you guys would like to go to some of our meetings and, you know, bring that, we'll, we have translators there and everything, so anyway.
I would say one more thing. So as we're going through this process, we'll be working with Joy closely. We'll have weekly check-ins. So this is not a me and Julie come in and do this analysis and do the engagement. We're going to be relying pretty heavily on people in the community to stay engaged. So, yeah.
Well, we missed you on our, on our conference call.
I'm so sorry, I know.
But Joy covered it pretty well.
Sure she did, thank you.
One thing that I would like to encourage council members to think about, because sometimes it's hard when either a consultant or staff presents to council and asks you a pointed question about feedback, conversation doesn't end tonight. If you think of items in your interactions, in your service clubs or in the community, feel free to email them to Joy or myself, and we'll make sure that they get into Joel and Julie's hands. One thing that I think about that I've heard council talk about in the past is just when we're talking about needs assessment, is how we take CDBG funding and we fund organizations internal to Auburn, and we also fund organizations outside of Auburn that provide service in our city. But I know that sometimes there's been debate about, you know, keeping money local, balanced with getting the types of services that we need reflected in our community. So those kinds of conversations are the conversations that you've had with applicants in the past who have found it challenging to get through the grant funding process. We can filter, Joy and I, what should go the direction of Joel and Julie, and then there's items that might rest with us a little bit, but, you know, hearken back to some of those discussions, some of those debates you've had, some of the frustrations you've expressed, and make sure that you pass them along as you can do.
Jeff, I did want to ask a question about the application. Have you guys changed the way that they're going to be doing it when somebody is not understanding some of the questions and filling it out correctly and don't complete it and send it incomplete?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to learn each application cycle. We're gonna continue to try to, you know, deploy some different methods. We do have to remember that some of those systems are created outside Auburn and are used regionally, so we have control over parks and we don't have control over other other parks. The parks that we have control over are more the human side, like how do we interact with people who have expressed frustration and provide better service so that they can get into the system? And I think a lot of people will say the system can be a little clunky to get through it. So that's on our mind, and we will bring to this special focus area, the community wellness special focus area, what our strategy is for the next round, all the engagement pieces, the outreach pieces that we will be putting into place, and we'll bring that to you before we do it, so that you can look at that list, either endorse it or say, you know, you're missing something. So that conversation's coming.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Or keep going, is that it?
That's it.
That was it, yeah. If there are other questions, I think Jeff already said it, feel free to reach out to them or us directly.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next topic will be right-of-way vacation. Excuse me, three B as in boy. Three B.
For the record, I'm Inger Gal, Public Works Director, and with me tonight is Amber Price, who's our right-of-way specialist. We've previously been in front of the committee in a previous study session to talk about the city-initiated right-of-way vacation, V1-18, which has to do with the Mountain View Cemetery. That discussion happened on May 13th, and at the, one of the previous council meetings, the council set the date for the public hearing to be June 17th, which is Monday. So since our last discussion with council on this, we have updated the staff report, and we wanted to provide some additional information tonight and answer any questions that you might have on this before that public hearing in action next week. Before that, I do want Amber to go ahead and review the vacation proposal so that you have that background that we went over.
City-initiated right-of-way vacation, V1-18, is for a vacation of approximately 44,501 square feet of right-of-way. It's located in the vicinity of Southeast 328th Street, between 58th Avenue South and 60th Avenue South, and 60th Avenue South, north of Southeast 328th Street. It's shown in red and yellow on the map on the screen, and also on page 22 of 45 of your agenda packet. At the previous meeting, we discussed why this vacation is being proposed and the proposed conditions that are recommended if the right-of-way vacation was approved. One of those conditions is the requirement for dedication of a 60-foot right-of-way at the northern edge of the cemetery's northern parcel, to be for future transportation needs to replace the right-of-way proposed for vacation. The dedication area is shown in blue on the map on the screen. The purpose of this vacation and subsequent dedication is to consolidate the city's cemetery parcels. It's consistent with the cemetery's master plan and move the public right-of-way to the northern edge of the cemetery property. The city currently has, and the cemetery currently has no plans to build a road in the dedication area. Right-of-way would only be built if needed for access by development, for the required development standards, and would be subject to the appropriate environmental reviews and approvals.
So with that, so last time we did talk a little bit about the potential development that is adjacent to the cemetery property, adjacent and just to the north. So that is currently served by the existing right-of-way. If Amber can hover over the area perhaps. So it's just to the, to the east of that red and the blue and yellow area that's on that map. So there hasn't been a formal application to the city for that development. However, we have had a few conversations, preliminary just conversations about concepts with a developer looking to develop that property. We also are aware and have heard concerns from the Mountain View North Neighborhood that's located just north of the blue area on the map, north of the right-of-way dedication area. Their concerns as it relates to the vacation are really kind of centered around the location of that proposed dedication and potential impacts on the trees within the area of that dedication, as well as construction traffic for whatever the potential future development might be for the property located east of them. We're also aware that the developer has been in conversations with residents of the Mountain View North Neighborhood, and while we have not been party to those conversations, we know that they've been discussing other options for road connections for the developer's property. However, since those discussions are not final and the city has not received any applications at this time that we can respond to, we cannot determine whether or not the proposed development for, the development located to the east of the cemetery property would actually meet the requirements of the city and meet the standards of the city for any roadway access. So with that, as we've looked at this, the staff's proposal is still to do the 60-foot dedication of right-of-way from the northern portion of the cemetery property to avoid any potential removal of access to the public street system for that vacant property that's located to the east of the cemetery property. Part of that is also to avoid any future potential for the roadway being built in the existing right-of-way area that would segregate the cemetery property, which is the purpose of going through the vacation process, is to make the cemetery property one continuous property without that segregation by a potential future roadway. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Any questions from council? Bob?
Just a quick one. I noticed there was a section in here about assessed value. Are we going to be reviewing those costs or value of the property?
So generally, with city-initiated right-of-way vacations, we don't look at the value because it's city-initiated. We would be charging ourselves if we looked at that.
In this particular case, because the city owns property on both sides of where this vacation would be, any amount that we would charge, we would end up charging to the city.
Okay.
It's not typically done as part of a city-initiated vacation.
John?
The potential area of development, from looking at the master plan, it appears to be quite steep.
It is. So it's hard to see on the map that's up there, but there is a ravine that cuts through that property, that segregates that property somewhat in half, which creates some difficulties for the developer as they go through laying out how to meet our standards and our road grades and our geometries and the access requirements, which is why in looking at this vacation, we felt it was important that we maintain a dedication of some sort of right-of-way where they can access the public street system from the southern property so that we don't have any concerns from a developer about us making it difficult for them.
Understood. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Good job. Now we're going to go to three as in, three C as in Charlie for the EMS, Emergency Management System Presentation.
Hello again. Dana Hindman, Director of Administration. One of the things I get to do is work with our emergency management team, and so I have Jerry Thorson, our manager, and Tyler here to speak with you. This was a request that came from Councilmember Baggett a while back. We had some scheduling conflicts, so we're finally bringing this forward. And to just really kind of give an overview of what are the things that are going on every day, most of the things that, that we do in emergency management are, are behind-the-scenes things, as we say. We're, we're doing all this work for something that we hope never happens, and so I thought I would give you folks a chance to meet our staff and hear about the work that we're doing, and so.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, council members. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate your support. Tonight, we'd like to spend about 15 minutes, if we can. We actually have about 45 minutes worth of material here, so we'll do our best. We'd like to start with the basic overview of the department, talk about some of our regional efforts. We'll talk a little bit about the snow response from back in February, talk about some plan updates that we've been working on, talk about training that we do with the city and the public, and then talk about how we're utilizing some of the budget funds that you've offered us for this year. So with our emergency management division, there's two full-time employees. Both Tyler and I are funded out-of-city funds. We also have a part-time employee that's funded through the Emergency Management Performance Grant. He does a lot of really solid work for us. He works with our CERT team. He manages our emergency communications team. He's about the best MacGyver that you could find out there. If you've got an issue with the radio, a computer, wiring, he's the guy to call. Tyler does a great job for us. He's been working on a whole bunch of different issues, including COOP, helping with the revisions to our CEMP, and he's our planning section chief in the EOC. So with the three of us, we also periodically have an AmeriCorps volunteer. This is something that we have done for many years, and the AmeriCorps volunteer, who we're in the process of recruiting another one now, does our disaster education, primarily focusing in the schools. We train that individual, and they schedule disaster presentations for as many of the classrooms as we can get into, and also helps with any other presentations. We've got a fairly small unit, but we stay pretty busy. One of the really pleasing parts to me is our volunteers, the emergency communications team. They're out, whether it's Pet Palooza, helping direct traffic, Veterans Day Parade, all kinds of different things. They're, they're out there all the time, and they're doing a whole bunch of good things on a day-to-day basis. But the reason that I value them so much is when the big one hits and we lose telephone, when we lose 800 megahertz, when we don't have the internet, they're the ones that are going to be communicating with the King County EOC, Pierce County, the state, anybody else out there. And it's a very solid team of volunteers, and I always like to give them credit for the, the solid work that they're doing for us. So what do we do on a day-to-day basis? Emergency managers typically focus on about five things. There's planning and developing plans for mitigation or comprehensive emergency management plan, COOP, all those different kind of things. We spend a lot of time planning for that event. As Dana said, we hope that we don't ever have to use that, but we spend a lot of time planning for the event. Mitigation is another one, and you'll be hearing more about this in the coming months because King County has just started the revisions to their regional mitigation plan, of which the City of Auburn has an annex and is a signatory to that. Some key efforts, if you think about the last couple of years, community development, public works, emergency management worked with Pacific, and we put in some barriers along the White River just upstream of A Street to mitigate any flooding that might have come into the, the Mobile Home Park there or our transfer station that's in there. So mitigation is also important to us. Response, that's the one that we don't do a lot of, but that'll have the biggest impact on the community and our citizens. So we spend a lot of our time training city staff to be ready for that response. Finally, recovery, we don't do much of that unless we have the responses. But one of the things that we work very hard with our city staff, and when I say that, I mean people from finance, from community development, from police, all the city staff that will help us operate that emergency operations center. We have to get them trained up in recovery because of the documentation is such a challenge. So there's a lot of that. And then finally, we spend a lot of time training, whether it's training the public to be more resilient, training city staff to be better prepared, training city staff to help operate in EOC, and some of those kind of things. So really, those are the, the five main areas that we focus on. I'm really proud of our CERT program. Over the years, the city has trained over 800 people in being better prepared for a disaster. Those are the people that are going to help their family, they're gonna help their neighbors, and they're gonna help the city. It's a great program. We recently partnered with the Outlet Collection Mall, and we had the final drill in one of their vacant occupancies. It created some interesting challenges, but it really did a nice job of improving the learning environment for all of our students. So we're gonna continue working with the public on those kind of efforts and continue training them as much as we can. As you can imagine, we're also very busy with the city events. We normally have booths at any of the, the city events like Pet Palooza, Fourth of July, those kind of things. It's one of our biggest opportunities to get the message directly to the citizens and encourage them to be better prepared. We've also been very busy with some of our business groups. We've had a longstanding relationship with Wesley Homes. They are about the best-prepared retirement center I've seen in the region, and of course, I've seen a bunch of those. We've recently been working with Merrill Gardens, trying to get them a little better prepared. We serve on the Emergency Management Committee with the hospital, and we've recently begun developing a, a COAD or Community Organizations Active in Disasters. We've invited several churches, the Red Cross, the YMCA, Chamber of Commerce, Outlet Collection Mall, and various others to try and find how we can work better together after the big one hits. So let's talk a little bit about the regional efforts. We talk a lot with citizens about being ready for a disaster and having your, your emergency kit ready. Well, the city needs to do that as well. If you think about it, we have to survive the same disaster that the citizens just went through and be ready to go to work immediately after. So we've been working with some of our, our friends in the area. You probably remember seeing an agreement between the City of Federway, City of Kent, and City of Auburn, where if we can't use our emergency operations center here and one of those two are in service, we can pick up the telephone, grab our stuff, run up to Federway or Kent, and operate in EOC in their facility, and vice versa. That doesn't happen a lot. I'm, I'm excited that we've got that capability now, and we're steps ahead of most other jurisdictions in King County because of that plan. But you might say, well, what if it's a regional event and they're busy too? Okay, so Plan B, here in the next week, I believe it is, you'll see an agreement between the city and the Auburn School District, where we could call up them, and let's say the valley floor has suffered from liquefaction and the buildings are unsafe, so we need to move to higher ground. In one of the cabinets in our office, we've got what we call our Drive-Away Kits. Essentially, we take all the contents from that cabinet, put them in a truck, and we run up the hill to one of the schools that we've pre-designated. In this case, it'll most likely be Auburn Mountain View High School. And not only can we run our EOC up there, but the departments will be able to take their essential personnel and operate their continuity of operations plan from up there. We can also have safe assembly areas for as citizens are driving up the hill out of the area, we can kind of collect them in one location before we have the ability to set up an emergency shelter. So it's kind of a waystation where they don't clog up the roads and we get them off there. And we also have in that agreement, emergency shelters. So it really solidifies the emergency relationship between the city and the school district. We all talk about, well, we'll just commandeer a school bus if we need one. Well, now we have an agreement in place where we just call up and say, here's what we need, can you provide it? And it's got the legal footing to do that. So we're very happy with those regional efforts that we've done. We're also in the, the middle of the process, and I heard from at least one of the directors earlier about the training he's going through. We're working with the American Red Cross. If you think about our comprehensive emergency management plan, it designates responsibilities for sheltering for certain city departments. Well, when we started looking around, it didn't appear that, at least in recent memory, would provide it any training for them and how to help run a shelter. So that's one of those things we've been working with Red Cross. We have 22 people between city staff, primarily Parks and Emergency Management, and the rest of that built out by our CERT volunteers, who will be going through shelter fundamentals for one course, and then selected members, essentially the, the staff, will be going through shelter management, so that we've got better ability to set up and run that shelter as we're moving through this. One of the nice things about that is we've invited the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, and they're also participating in that training, and they'll have better abilities whether to help us with the shelter or to operate their own upon the hill. So kind of another nice partnership there.
Excuse me.
Let's talk about the snow response for a few minutes. You might have heard a few things about that. That was an interesting event for us. When we hear about events like that coming, we try to share as much information with the departments ahead of time. In this case, we were receiving briefings from the National Weather Service, so we were pushing those out. We had a, a meeting with the departments where we talked about, if this happens, what are you going to do, what will you need from us, so that we're better, better prepared for that. Then the snow hit on a Friday night, and it really dumped. During the, the weekend, we operated the EOC remotely from each of our homes, so to speak. So I was at home monitoring the 800 megahertz radio, the emails, those kind of things. Scott Curry was working on some of his things. And I'd like Tyler to talk a little bit about our social media presence on that, and also just generally what we're doing to improve our social media interaction with the public.
Sure. Deputy Mayor, Mayor, council members, my name's Tyler Turner. I've been with the Emergency Management Division since late 2014. Prior to this, I was a paramedic, worked around the state of Alaska. Yeah, so we have different ways of reaching out to our citizens, so mass notification, things like that. We have our Code Red, our reverse 911 system that we can utilize. We have 1700 AM, which we utilize during the snow event where we can broadcast messages. And then this new, upcoming New Age kind of thing, social media, we have Facebook and Twitter. As Jerry was mentioning, with the snow event, the National Weather Service was, as they always do typically, they, they, they tell us when, you know, an event is coming. So for instance, the snow event, we knew ahead of time that this was coming. We were monitoring both the National Weather Service and other meteorologists that were predicting different measurements. We were getting anything from eight to 12 inches to up to upwards of two feet. So we were kind of just preparing for, you know, the whole nine yards, everything, anything and everything. So we were sitting down ahead of time, our AmeriCorps, myself, Dana, Kalen Brady, our Communications and Management Team, and we were saying, how can we utilize Facebook and some of our social media to disseminate information, relay information out to, out to the public? So I want to kind of put some of this into, into perspective. So our, our Facebook page, and by ours, I mean emergency management, the, the City of Auburn has a Facebook page, PD has a Facebook page, I believe Parks has a Facebook page, EM has a Facebook page as well. We have about just under 2,000 people that follow us. On any given week, we might do two or three posts, and we get, you know, up to 50 engagements. An engagement would be someone is actually actively clicking on our post, reading what we have to say, maybe commenting on it, liking it, whatever you want to call it. During this event, we, we, like I said, we, we met ahead of time. We were trying to figure out how are we, how are we going to share messaging and information? Who's sharing what? Because that's the big thing. We're okay with, to a degree, duplicating information, but we can't, we can't have conflicting information. So what the City of Auburn Facebook page is sharing and what we are sharing needs to be parallel and not kind of clashing against each other, right? So again, going, and going back to perspective here, 50 views in a week during the snow event, within that week, we had over 100,000 people engaging on our Facebook page. So that in and of itself to me, and, and for the city, I believe is a victory, a massive victory. I mean, that's a, a great way to share information. It started, you know, Facebook, Twitter, started as something that was more of a social, you know, reconnect with your friends and family and, and stuff like that. Now it's businesses are on there, and now it's news stations are on there, and it's really a way of, of sharing emergency information. Me personally, I have, you know, obviously all my friends and family on my Facebook page, but I have all the fire departments, all the police departments, all the emergency management agencies, all the news stations, because when I'm looking for breaking news, that's where they're going. Everyone that's following those Facebook pages, they know that they can reach out to the most people through that outlet. Everyone's on their phones looking at Facebook all day. So, so yeah, like I said, we, we met ahead of time before the event. We sat down at a table and said, okay, emergency management, we're gonna, we're gonna try to share some road closure information, some, some general preparedness, preparedness information, like cold hazard stuff, you know, cold temperature kind of stuff, FEMA stuff. We share a lot of FEMA stuff, general preparedness stuff. We were sharing stuff that PD was sharing out through their Facebook page. It was really a, a collective and collaborative effort.
I was asking, told me to hold off. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So because we don't have a lot of big incidents, we try to treat the small incidents as a learning experience. Could we have done things better during the snowstorm? Absolutely. We could have improved communication between the departments, we could have solidified the messages going out. But essentially, after that incident, we, we've had several meetings with a couple of the departments and talked about takeaways from it, how we could improve, things that we should be doing better in the future. And then internally, we worked and we've been developing some internal documents that clarifies a little better when we activate. We're developing better responses for high heat events, snow and ice events, weather-related events, those kind of things, so that we're better ready when the big one hits to just hit the ground running. We're always trying to improve. So let's move on to some of the plans, if we could. The first, you've probably heard that we're in the process of revising our comprehensive emergency management plan. It's required by FEMA and the state, and we're right at the tail end of that. The state requires it be revised every five years. The city plan, I believe, says it should be revised every four years, so we're kind of in that window. It's nearly complete. We've got one last meeting to kind of review all the, the total changes we've done. Then we'll send it to legal for a, a final look, make sure they're okay with it. Then it goes to the state for a review. And once we pass those steps, we'll bring it to you folks for your consideration and hopefully adoption. Most of it is just kind of updating. We've done a few minor things. For example, our plan has always said that a, a level three activation of the EOC is the biggest one, but if you look at the FEMA model, it's just the opposite. Three is the lowest and one is the highest. We've done a few things like that, but we're really happy that we've added a pet sheltering plan in there, working with Animal Control and the Humane Society. If you think about it, whether you have pets or your friends have pets, would they leave them at home to go to an emergency shelter? No, they're gonna stay home with the pet. So we've got to combine those efforts so that people can drop the pet off and then go to the shelter joined very closely together. So we've added that. We've also added a section in there on limited English potential. Earlier today, you were listening about communicating with different cultures and, and groups. Well, between Tyler and I, we speak a total of one language. So we have to have a process in place so that we can speak to those other languages here in town. So we've, we've got a plan in place. It's going to be a model for a lot of other cities here in King County, and we're also working with the larger King County effort to develop systems so that we can communicate with everybody in the community. So we're really happy with that. We've also added a pandemic influenza part to the plan. If you think- If you think about some of the issues over the last couple of years, the possibility for having something that significant, we need to have a plan in place. So, when it starts happening, we know what we're going to do. Tyler, as I mentioned earlier, is on our COOP plan, so if you'd kind of...
Yep. COOP stands for Continuity of Operations Planning. For anyone in the room that doesn't know what that stood for, in our case, continuity of government. When I first came here in 2014, that was my first project, and I'm still working on it today, and I'll probably be working on it 20 years down the road. It is essentially, in short, it's a plan that every department will have one, some divisions even will have their own continuity of operations plan. Essentially, what it is, is it details, in the event of some type of city interruption, a disaster, major emergency, it details what the department's essential functions are, who their essential personnel are, the resources and equipment, those essential personnel need to do those essential functions. And then, if in the event they can't operate where they typically operate, you know, their day-to-day eight to five, where else can we operate at? So, that's where these agreements with the Auburn School District, with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, so on and so forth, we can hopefully operate, once these agreements are in place, we can hopefully operate out of one of their facilities. So, currently, these plans are on hold until the CEMP is updated and adopted. And some of these agreements are finally formalized. So, once are finalized. So, once that's done, we'll pick up where we left off with COOP, get all the plans with all the department's uniform in parallel, finish, completed, and then with the hopes of eventually presenting it at a study session and getting it formally adopted, making official plans. That's the hope.
I remember what I wanted to ask. You know how we get those, everybody has a cellphone nowadays? And we get woken up with these big alarms about a child being abducted, and there are cars, you know, license plates. Do we have anything in place for like saying that we're going to have a strong storm heading our way, such-and-such dates? How many days is it going to supposed to last, like we did the snow? Do we have something in place to alert people, to prepare? And we do for our cellphones?
Absolutely. We have several different venues. First is we have our Code Red software, where we can blast out a message to landline telephones, cellphones that people have signed up, emails. So, we can do that throughout a small part of the city, draw a line around a neighborhood and send a message to them, or we can send it to the whole community. We also have the ability to work through King County for a notice very similar to what you're saying, that would go out over the cellphones. We could put it out over the radios, the emergency alert.
You made the statement that you have to apply...
Landlines do not.
Okay.
Cellphones do. So, usually at events...
And where would you apply for something like that?
That's one of the things that we talk about at every one of our public events. We have little cards on them that show how to sign up for it. It's very easy. Or they can go to the city's website, and there's the ability right there just to click a button and register for it. So, we make it as easy as we can.
And if you head over, this was put up maybe three weeks ago, if you head over to the customer service in the Annex, Annex Building, there's a new big sign that says, "Alert, King County." It's in big red. It's right in front of the doors there. It tells you how to sign up.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Well, I want to applaud your efforts, Jerry and Tyler, I really do, because as the city's representative on the Emergency Management Advisory Committee for King County, I know Jerry and I are communicating all the time about all the different drills and other activities going on to sharpen our skills and make us ready for the big one. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And we kind of know that, and it's keeping that in the back of our minds. But one of the things that, three and a half years ago, when I came onto the council, I had the benefit, Jerry took us all up into the Emergency Operations Center and basically informed us about what our role would be as council members. And I believe the mayor was present as well. And since that time, we've never heard any more about it from a council standpoint. And I know that we probably have a new council coming on first of the year, which will be a good opportunity to maybe go through that again and make sure that all the council members really do understand what their role is in the event of a major emergency. And that's kind of where I was leading when I really was kind of requesting some training. I was more focused on the council and what our role would be. But I do appreciate your giving us all the information as to what you've been doing, because I know you are very active out there with the police and fire and all of the other agencies. So, it's really gratifying to know. And I know that on our advisory committee, Auburn does take a lead in a lot of that because a lot of the things that I have brought up that you're doing, everybody is kind of in amazement that, why aren't they doing this? So, I know that we're a leader in that, and I want to see us continue in that venue. So, thank you for all the work you're doing.
Appreciate that. And we were talking with Director Hinman just recently about providing some training for the council, so we'll be sure to stay on that.
I kind of forgot what my role would be. It's been three and a half years, and we haven't revisited. I think maybe it's probably coming up soon.
We'll get you there.
Thank you.
So, then just lastly, I would like to reinforce that we are NIMs compliant. We strive very hard to maintain that. All of our new employees have to go through certain training. And then, as you move up the organizational chart, we add in additional training for leadership. So, we will continue to work on that. That's always a challenge with an organization that has as much turnover as this one does. But we're working very hard on it. Two very quick last things, if I could. Thank you for the funding for the EOC refresh. We have a whole bunch of electronics up there that we depend on, like you would not believe, for displaying situational awareness, what's going on out in the community, what we're doing about it, how we're communicating. So, the funding that you've provided for this year, we've already met with the IT department several times. We even met with the vendor recently, so we're well in process to get that equipment upgraded. There's at least one key bit that if it fails, we're going to be in big trouble. And then finally, I'm not sure if you heard, but we were recently designated a storm-ready city again by the National Weather Service.
Yay!
Not a big thing globally, but if you knew what went on behind the scenes to make sure that we were able to receive the proper messages at the police department and Public Works and all that, it does take a lot of effort, and Scott Curry is the one that really does that. I'm guessing I went over my 15 minutes.
Yeah, you did, but that's all right. This is important. John, did you have a last remark?
Oh, no. No, that's...
Where is that displayed? In your office?
We haven't found a home for it yet. Do you have a good idea?
No, but I think we should have it displayed somewhere.
And our mayor's...
Well, Director Dana, she'll find a place.
Sure. You got it.
Okay, any further guys and gals? None? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, now, we're going to go down into item four, Community Wellness Discussion Items. Item A, and Councilmember Trump manual takeover.
2019 Legislative Action Housing and Human Services. Tate, Jeff Tate.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Jeff Tate. I'm Director of Community Development. And one of the things that we wanted to, or I wanted to bring forward to City Council was just a little snapshot of some of the more significant pieces of legislation that went through Olympia in this past session. So, in your packet, attached to an agenda bill, is about a page and a half of summary items. As is the case with any new legislation, we sift through and read the language very thoroughly over and over and over. It's not always very simple. So, as I go through these items, there may be some follow-up that's required if there are questions about any of these legislative actions. First of all, I wanted to point out that the state legislature increased the funding for the Housing Trust Fund this past session by about 20%. So, that puts that dollar figure at $175 million for affordable housing projects in Washington State. And the bullet points below that introduction itemize out how that money is earmarked. So, much of it is either competitive grant funding or low-interest loans or any sort of financial incentive that will promote affordable housing through the community. The second item, fast-forwarding down to the bottom of the page, is the Affordable and Supportive Housing Local Sales and Use Tax. This is an interesting piece of legislation. It allows cities to tap into some existing sales tax revenue. Say that because there's lots of legislative options out there for cities to consider where the city increases the sales tax over and above what already exists. This piece allows the city to potentially tap into already existing sales tax that is currently being directed towards Olympia. So, this is something that we want to talk a little bit more about, learn a little bit more about, and expand that conversation in time. The clock's ticking on this piece of legislation. Essentially, the city, within six months of the effective date of the bill, will have to adopt a resolution declaring its intent to move forward with this option, and then within another six months, has to come back and by ordinance, put it into effect. So, there's, we want to make sure that we don't miss a window. If this is an opportunity that's good for Auburn, of course, is the cases with anything, we need to understand what strings are attached to that, to make sure that anything that we bring forward to City Council is in the best interest of Auburn and City Council's fully informed. But this is an interesting and kind of unique piece of legislation.
So, is this moving forward within our city?
Well, we're going to bring forward a conversation in the next six months to council, to inform council about this option in detail. We want to understand what revenue does it really raise? We want to understand, again, the strings attached. Usually, when there's an option like this, you have to do certain things a certain way. And we want to make sure that we're informing council the right way about what those options are. So, we'll talk more about that as the months progress.
We also asked Jeff to look into it because council has asked several times about what is the money used for, what pocket of money has that come from? And so, that's why Jeff is bringing it back to us so we can understand it better.
On the next page, there's a couple bullet points related to changes to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act. And the first one, Senate Bill 5600, is an eviction reform bill, and it essentially allows tenants 14 days instead of three to catch up with late rental payments before eviction proceedings move forward. And then, House Bill 1440 extends the Notice of Rental Increase to 60 days instead of 30. These are important, obviously, for lots of reasons, but they're timely for us because I think back in March, we were talking about landlord-tenant laws, and we're slated to come back to City Council on August 12th to talk a little bit more about that conversation. But two timely items. And then, the last two bullet points, and I apologize if I look down and read these kind of verbatim, but I don't want to screw up the terms that are used. But the Senate and House agreed or reached concurrence on a final version of the bill that would eliminate permanent temporary assistance for needy families, TANF. Essentially, what this bill does is it eliminates what had existed, a 12-month requirement or timeframe, that if you came to Washington State from another state, services and benefits that you could tap into tied back to the state you just came from. So, whatever funding or whatever service that you were eligible for was limited to what was in the state prior. Now, that 12-month requirement essentially is eliminated, and those services are available to you without having to meet a residency requirement. And the last item there, House Bill 1303 in combination with Senate Bill 5341, removes some restrictions on accessing the Working Connections Childcare Program. Essentially, you had to have a job in order to access this particular resource, and the law was modified in a way that allows a student who's enrolled at, you know, say, a college or university or vocational college can tap into those resources while they're going through their educational program as well.
When does that take effect?
I don't know the actual date. Generally speaking, most of these types of laws take effect about July 1st.
This is going to help a lot of single mothers, because when I had a daycare, I had a lot of the single mothers that were going to, because at that time, they had to work so many hours to receive help and also be able to go to college. So, this is going to help a lot of them.
Tough to do both at the same time.
Exactly, yeah.
So, that's it.
First one's council.
My bad.
Come on. Just a quick...
You two get your act together.
That's okay.
Just a quick, and these bills are all approved, are they not?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Any other, any further questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, now, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Colosa.
Thanks, Jeff. Good job. Okay. Other discussion items. Council. New business? Any new business? Now, we go to the fame matrix. So, Auburn Avenue Theater, TBD?
No.
September 9th.
I got one though, not dark.
Which one?
I had one like this.
Yep.
Auburn Avenue Theater, 9/9. Item two, funding options, ongoing. Don't we have a meeting? We do, don't we? Next...
We do, but...
Next Monday.
Because it is an ongoing topic.
Item three, delete. Item four, mandatory housing. Inspections, August 12th. Item five, animal control, July the 8th.
Why was that moved to wellness, to my committee?
Was TBD, wasn't it?
It's listed under Municipal Services.
Oh, I think it was because it was specific.
Yeah, animal control should be under Municipal Services.
Right.
Under the yellow.
Item five goes to yellow, horse salmon.
Thank you.
Yeah, it should be under... Mini Services.
I would have liked you to come and talk to my group, but Bill, you're not in my category. Sorry. Sorry.
Well, it was under the wrong category, but it just got moved to, not the one that it should be under.
Okay, council members, uh, any additions? Bob? I just wanna bring something up that came up in our, uh, one of our Healthiest City meetings the other day, and I think, uh, Councilmember Trout Manuel and I are currently reviewing...
You beat me. Go ahead.
With your hand. Anyway, I think that, uh, quite soon, we're probably going to wanna see some of the, uh, potential resolutions that are being prepared right now. Uh, and I'm not sure exactly when, but I think that has to do with, what, three separate topics?
It's, it's got to do with the Blue Ribbon Committee, and we had several people on the committee wanting to know, um, about us doing an ordinance or a resolution. And, uh, right now, it's in, uh, Dana Hin- Hinman's hands, it's gone through our attorney, and they're still not finalizing, it hasn't been finalized, but, um, we started this back in January, and now all of a sudden, the committee has been asking, what's the status of it?
On what?
On, uh, on, or, resolution. And it's on, uh, mental health, and also on the, um, READY program, and there's one more category, um, that we're looking to...
I didn't bring my materials with me, but, uh, there are three, three separate ones, uh, one of which has been, uh, proposed as a revision to the, the main one for the Healthiest City.
Right. But that's, that's what it is. Healthiest City 2020, Mental Health, and the READY program. Uh, and so...
What are the resolutions for?
Um, our fire chief, um, what's his name?
Are you talking to the deputy?
Deputy.
Fire Chief Kevin Olson?
He's the one that brought it up to the committee, that they wanted to know, how have we been measuring this whole committee on being the healthiest city for 2020 overall? And so, um, Pat brought it to, she says she was going to bring it to, uh, write something up and then present it to you and the attorney, and it's been taken, uh, Steve has already seen it, and he has revised the whole condensed, the one that Pat has done. And, uh, now our committee is wanting to know, where are we at? 2020 is coming up, and we haven't really, uh, shown, and I know that somebody in the council mentioned, how are we measuring also? Um, and I think Largo Wells was the one that brought up, how are we measuring it? What's the cost, and how effective has it, you know, and so, um, that is what we're bringing to council, 'cause they want to know if we could get it, get it to the group here pretty soon.
I think perhaps at the next study session, we can probably bring the materials here. I, I know right now, we are currently evaluating these things for our comments.
Right.
Uh, I believe that the draft, as the one that was condensed from the major 2020, uh, took too much out of the actual, pardon the expression, meat and potatoes of the intent. So I think that we probably need to go back and take a look at that. I think there are some items that we can reduce and make, make, uh, you know, um, reduction in, in the words and language, but I think we, we almost threw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. I think we need to go back and reassess that. But maybe at the next study session, we can bring those things forward and, uh, maybe discuss them with the rest of the council.
I will be more than glad to bring it in to you tomorrow, so you can look at what was presented to Bob and I.
Still not understanding what the resolution is for, so...
Well, there's three of them, so...
Well, again, I'm not understanding what the three resolutions are for.
The Health Department, um, one of the ladies from the Health Department brought it to our committee due to the fact that Kent and Federal Way and another city has passed an ordinance on healthiest and mental health. Uh, and so they brought it to us about, and then that's when Kevin made the comment. Uh, and so, we started this in January, and we haven't, we asked Pat, where, where were we at, at this time? And she says it's still with, uh, with Dana, and the attorney gave her what she had given him, and he revised the whole pa- it's now one page where Pat's was two pages.
Okay, typically an ordinance is a law.
Well, it's a resolution that we, as the committee, have decided to do, but they were looking at both ordinance and a resolution.
Okay, so...
We don't really believe that a law is something to look at. That's why there are three resolutions that are prepared, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll find out from our city attorney in the morning, what...
Yeah, Dana is familiar with them.
This is, okay.
Any other comments, council members? Mayor, directors? If not...
It's your chance.
We're adjourned. 8:27.